Yes, that's our.
Changes that have been made, you guys are part of the audience, you're experiencing with us is talking about some unique kinds of issues tonight that we haven't had to deal with. All right. So, there any other, oh, we have one other person present that is a member of the board who's owning the fields from Steel Smith who's here. And I don't see any other officials who are present in the meeting. For the conduct of our meetings, for those of you who are with us on Zoom, will you uh, when you have a need to speak, you'll have to unmute yourself. At this point, we need to have everyone muted online and you know, keep it that way because there's sometimes other kinds of sounds that go through. And really, the internet can be connected to whatever you want to use if you're using it. You've got one person signed in on Zoom, telephone number six one four four nine eight. Eight nine six, I don't know, six one four nine eight nine six six eight zero. Will that person please identify yourself, unmute and identify yourself.
Dave Jackson.
Oh, hi, Dave. From Hawaii. He's watching.
Yep.
Hi, Dave.
Eighty-two, eighty-two degrees and sunny, guys.
Thank you. Wish we were there with you. So, when you do have a need to speak, please be sure to identify yourself and come up to your team's microphone as opposed to him, or you will be able to use his portable mic. Which we will make available. We don't have any new applications, I don't think. If we do, I haven't contacted by anyone to manage those. Oh, you have, you have a new application to submit?
Yeah.
Did he sign my, he was one of the, I have a lot. They're like over here.
Okay, then you bring them up and give them to, you can go to the microphone to speak, yes.
Did you play it?
Yeah.
My name's Dan Hershey.
That little mic for you, let's make sure it's working for the people that are home. Go ahead.
My name's Dan Hershey. I live at one five six seven five Montgomery Road. I seek to change the adjoining property that I have from zoning designation from farm residential to agriculture, agriculture represent residential. Does that make sense?
It's kind of unusual, but yes, you can change the FR1.
I have the application.
We did not say the application.
Okay. Well, before you submit your application, let me ensure that I point out to you that if we accept your application and find any errors at all in the application, it will simply be rejected without review. So, it's, it's important to make sure that you have everything completed correctly on your application before you submit it.
Okay.
We will not be reviewing it at all tonight. The only thing that we would do, we'd be taking potentially, if we have checks that are necessary, and then we would set a hearing date. But if we set that hearing date and we review it at the hearing or start the review, if we find any errors or any information missing, it will simply be rejected at that point. You forfeit the $500 basic fee. But the A R H D will not, you will be able to have that returned to you. The check will not be back. So, I just want to make sure you're aware of that. And we will have a form for you to sign that acknowledges that you understand that those are the conditions if you submit your application tonight.
Is this, just if I may beg the initial, is this highly unusual? I see that the zoning property around the adjacent area is all agricultural residential, is that the correct designation?
Uh, yeah. I don't have any idea what.
If I may say.
Most people in the township are choosing to have their parcels changed from AR1 agricultural to FR1.
Um, yellow to green.
Then, then your AR1 to FR1. So, I think you probably just split the terms.
Where you go.
Okay. You want to retake the five acre lawn or greater and be able to reduce it down to two acre lawn, like what you might be.
I have in total eight and a half acres. Okay, my intention is to split those in two pieces of property into three.
Okay. Potentially, yes, you'd have.
I must say, I didn't realize this is going to be such a trial.
Next question?
Well, no, we're just, usually someone will come in and meet the zoning inspector and they will give you some a lot of the information that I'm giving you here tonight, that would be refused.
I've done my research. I'm ready to submit my application. I have the checks. I have the signature. I have everything. I've done my reading. I'm here to.
All right. And it will present it to Mr. Cannon, our director of zoning.
Just know that, you know, regular citizen.
Very clear on the procedural guidelines, it's like, you know, what Mike were doing. There should be something that says we're gonna submit those a week or two prior to even leaving, check for them opportunistically.
I don't know that, that. Not in the island.
But he brings up a good point. How should he know that? Other directions got it again.
I didn't.
I don't think it says that either, so. We gotta, we gotta lead the horse through the water. So, that would be my recommendation is something on the procedural guideline somewhere that says they, a week prior, two weeks prior, whether he decides to submit these or contact the zoning department.
I embrace the reviewing process. I embrace the whole zoning process. I am merely submitting my application. And, and I can leave, right?
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Okay, if you are going to.
Don't we yet because.
If you're gonna cash the.
Then we'll need to design a form. Uh. Matt's taking a story of mine. Do you have the checks in the problem well?
They checked for $500. And there's, uh, total acres is three point four nine. Yep, five seventy-five eighty-five.
Three point four nine?
Yeah.
So, like, that would have to already be FR1.
That would be.
Or not.
A legal one.
You said you're wanting to take two parcels and split them into three. Do you first, are you first combining those?
That is, that is, you know, conceptual stage right now. All I want to do is change the yellow piece into green. Just like all the adjacent properties around on the zoning map. And then I believe I can split the land any way I want.
So, I am missing something here big time. Yep, so I guess my advice here looking at this, just three points is you should schedule a time to meet with Mike and walk through it.
I would love that. I would love that. If I may say, as long as everybody's listening, I stopped during office hours three times. I emailed Jason and I tried the voicemail and what.
Jason?
Or whoever the, I, yeah, Jason.
Jason is, was the chairperson, Jason Wagner? Or?
And he didn't return my email.
Or the zoning appeals. That's not a zoning appeals application.
All I could say is you folks need to be more respectful. I would enjoy meeting with my people over my plan.
Please do. I mean, that'll save you a lot of, and we'll.
So, do I?
Why don't you take your materials with you and hang on to them, then you come in and use the mic. And if, if, um, at that time, you can submit the application.
Just, just for my own education.
You can give it to Mike, I should.
What is, what is the purpose for this? I was told that you submit your zoning application if it's needed.
That's correct.
Okay, why are you not accepting it? Why?
Because I'm trying to make sure that we avoid charging you $500. And then you come in and you're upset because all we're gonna do is look at it and say, this is, this application is not valid. Therefore, you lose your $500.
And, and I've done a lot of reading on it, but I would, I'll say.
That's the reason.
Sorry, I have no idea.
Thank you.
Not right. No, I do think to Matt's point, I do think that, you know, if, if we can add something into the procedural guidelines, that will help us. And I, I think most people choose to do it, but if we can make it as.
We could add.
Straightforward as possible, I think that can only help.
It's a. Might have, or shut it up with the V C A. No, he must. He showed up as a V C A and we tried to explain it to him and he got mad and left.
Well, you know, it's often for some people to overwhelm the process.
He came to the V C A. Yeah, he came to the V C A and thought that was where he was going to apply. So, we informed him that that was not the case. Well, and so we were looking up the dates for him and stuff to come to you guys. And he got mad and walked out. Sorry, I'm sorry ladies. I know, I'm just saying, that's what we're hearing, Mike. I didn't want to accept it, you know. You know, I mean, waste $500. Yeah. Right. All right.
We'll make sure we get that in the minutes, that way it's, I can have it. Give people direction.
Yeah.
Well, we'll modify the procedural guide.
This, this whole thing needs to be in the record. This whole, this being, what do you want to do, and why would you say that?
Like we're on reports, you know.
Onto that computer, so.
Good luck.
It is now, um, pass that point along, yeah, seven fifty. And with that, we would like to have recess or regular meeting in the inventory. And with that, the regular meeting of zoning conditions recess, and we will move to open and come go hearing on P R C D number three oh one. With that, we'll fall roll again. Um. Okay. We have the list. This time Mike is wanting to call. I have the word, okay. Tom Mead?
Here.
Johnny Nelson?
Yeah.
Virginia Wills?
Here.
Brittany Hopper?
Yeah.
Mike Cadley?
Here.
And Lou Hamel?
Here.
These are the alternate, he's also serving. All five hundred are present, so we all think of, I don't know how to say it, the commission. So, we've already introduced the zoning commission members. And I don't think that we got any new some general meeting. But first they will run through everyone again. Virginia Wills? To my left, Tom Mead, Mike Cadley, Sheriff, and Johnny Nelson, Vice Chief, Brittany Hopper, and then Lou Hamel. These are all for them. Township officials present, we have our zoning inspector. Still under, I don't know whether it's properly called zoning inspector going on, I think. Matt Curris is the resigning. He hasn't. Zoning inspector and Mike Cannon is the new, newly retired director of zoning and development. The other official person is Jim Steel Smith, member of Board of Zoning and Development. Let me explain the purpose and procedures that we will follow during the conference. Commission members will comment and or ask additional questions following the presentation by the applicant. While we know public conversation at this time, when that's finished, the public will have the opportunity to comment and or to ask questions. During the public comment portion, please observe the following procedure. Only one person speaks at a time. Please come up and take the question. At that time, with your name and address, if the secretary has been recorded, be brief and factual. Please do not bring up a point or question to be addressed and or asked. Never over one person can give it at a time. Please do not interrupt the speaker. And please do not carry on individual conversations while someone is speaking. If there is a group that wishes to be heard, please have a spokesperson for the group to address the question. Purpose for tonight's meeting, we will determine if the application contains all the required information. If the required property owners were all notified. If the application meets the requirements for the proposed district. If the proposed district and proposed plan conforms to the township comprehensive plan. And finally, is it accompanied by a final development plan that meets all the requirements for a planned residential conservation district? Res zoning involves multiple steps and agencies. Our hearing is the first step. Our recommendation will go to the township trustees. If approved, the applicant must then also go through the county health department, precinct system, guy engineers, street construction, county engineer and soil water conservation district training, township zoning inspector of or additional so the zoning permits from construction is beginning. If the P R C D is approved by the trustees, it will become the specific zoning requirements for the property and must be followed by the property owner. As that, I would like to ask Mike if you will now read the public notice.
With our intention, zoning conditions being asked to consider the following S R E I fund for LLC forty sixteen Township Way, twenty two aisle four three two one nine. The seat with the rezone sixty-seven point nine two nine acres from current zoning AR1 agricultural residential to proposed zoning P R C D plan residential conservation district. There's no physical address for the property, parcel ID number three one six three zero zero four zero one four zero zero two. Parcel ID number three one six three zero zero four zero one four zero zero two.
Thank you. The application on the correct form.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. And specifically, the zoning request is to pull down the planned residential conservation district onto the property, which is currently zone AR1, is that correct?
That is.
And it will continue to be AR1 until such time as the approval is granted for the planned conservation residential district. If the application is not approved, the property will continue to operate under that zone of district AR1. Commission members, listen correctly, the description first in text and map form, and do they reinforce it still? Don't they find any discrepancies?
If we tell. If you have.
Yeah, it's. Not like.
Does he anything going into?
No, no, the, um, he doesn't. And I thought they went, went to the.
Did anybody send the pictures when you made anything? Okay, fair enough, good. Have the adjacent adjoining contiguous and cross town prosecutor only put down a dollar? Mike? Yes, they have. All right. Were there any others at all returned? None. Now, audience, among the public, are there any non notified property owners present? Any none? Um, Mike, are there any signed and mineralized, rated for non notified property owners? There are not? Thank you. Members of the commission, before we begin a detailed review of the development plan, are there any other possible errors?
I do have some, some questions. In the application itself, um, I understand that it remains AR1 until it is approved, but then not approved. I also had that noted, should it say P R C D?
Yeah, I, I think it should say P R C D. Because I, I marked that as well. And we would, uh, it does remain AR1. But P R C D, once it's approved, then that zoning is what we stand on, the zoning.
Yes, so just like all other applications, we have our current and our proposed, and so the proposed should be here to be.
So, um.
So, you get that?
Yeah, talk about that.
With public files typically, it still should remain AR1 on the, on the map, so.
It will remain AR1 on the map until such time as it is approved. And then on the zoning map, it will also show that it is.
Yeah, just, it's contrary to what I think the prosecutors often advised us in the past. I'd be happy to, to change that, but, um, just out of nature, they typically indicated.
There's a slide, and it slides down the side of the podium on this side.
And it can set up while talking to him. Um, yes, though, but we can see, whatever the board would like to see happen here, but I had been advised in the past with public files that you might want to avoid the appearance of a rezoning, uh, because the district doesn't remain un.
Yeah, it's.
There's a.
In our regard, we are not rezoning it.
Sure.
But insofar as identifying it, identifiable, I, uh. I want.
Well, but if the prosecutor has advised him otherwise, I think before. Well, I think that's just because the prosecutor's worried about it, looking like it's zoning is changing. But the way our forms are set up. Well, then can we write it as P R C D overlay on AR1, so it still has both, but it's stated that it's.
That's what I attempted to do with the form, so whether I filled it that way, that would be the, I think, preferred method.
Okay.
To do that.
Yeah, so then we could give up. So, we can work to deal with it.
The AR1 remains, it's simply a P R C D along with that.
Correct.
You would not be able to apply for a P R C D if you didn't have, currently have your AR1 or FR1 on the property. Because the P R C D is only applicable across the township to those zoning district. Any other language, it's not. All right. Um, anything else?
There are a few duplicates and addresses, but that seems to be fairly common.
Yeah, the reason why they duplicated usually the parcel number of the difference that they were representing in multiple parcels, so in perspective of the form, we wanted to make sure they were noted that we topped those parcels.
Yeah, well, good, thank you.
And, and your application number reads twenty-three, two, six, zero, one. Here's my bill with twenty-two eventually.
Yeah, I believe the form is still at twenty-two, while the new form, it still was living in the past, so.
We're working on getting that.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, um. Mike, what is the recommendation of the Delaware zoning commission?
Uh, the regional planning commission has January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting, recommended conditional approval of the following requests, the R P C file number zero one three zero N.
Now, were there any specific conditions that identified?
We have these comments here. And we have staff recommendations. Do you want to hear the conditional approval?
No.
So. What I asked before here.
First, it wants to become a part of the record.
Yeah, so Delaware County Regional Planning recommends conditional approval, and then these are the conditions, so.
Good. The three on the finger, one through one. Lots one and two, which front on Gorsuch's road may not be part of this subdivision, must be divided prior to plating.
This, this is the recorded one, I'm sure it's.
Okay.
No, it's not going to come.
It doesn't project out to the. It only goes. So.
The three light on the bottom.
Great. All right. Yes, I will. Lots one and two, which front on Gorsuch's road may not be part of the subdivision, must be divided prior to plating. A sidewalk must be provided along at least one side of the subdivision streets. And a traffic access study must be submitted and approved by the D C E O prior to approval of final plan.
All right, we'll come back to that. Thank you. That's the, that's the conditional approval from Delaware Regional Planning. All right, with the applicant now, please go ahead and present an overview of the development plan, so that we can see that development plan. What do I need to talk?
Perfect, perfect. I actually, good timing, I just got into a weight room, so.
I was gonna say, somebody else.
Yeah, if you don't mind, do I admit here?
You can, or.
If you don't mind admitting me, I'll, uh, pull up my presentation. Uh, it's unbelievable. Yeah. Gotcha, thank you.
Not sure the new website. You've got me in the direction.
I'm sharing.
Uh, my screen will get shared here. I'll get, we put together just a brief presentation, I'd kind of like to walk through with you and give a little overview of the project as it's presented to you, and then we can get into some of those, those details. So, if you can see my screen. So if you can see my screen, uh, yeah, there it works. So the States of Duncan Run's had a little bit of history here with the board. We, we were in front of you for a, uh, rezoning from AR one to FR one a few months back. Uh, we went through a discussion about what a P R C D would look like. Um, we've been very appreciative about the dialogue that occurred, and obviously understand this is a unique proposal, and that it's your first in township. Uh, but we're excited to talk with you about it. Um, it's not, while it's the first in the township, but we've done, uh, other conservation districts, uh, Plan for Land. And in, in my life past, we, uh, helped author conservation codes, and I did some of the original, uh, research, I guess, for, uh, Delaware County. Uh, back when I worked for Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, helped them to, uh, promote conservation based, uh, plans, so. Excited to be here tonight, uh, is what Regional Planning introduced as one of the first conservation subdivisions in Delaware County, uh, as it's proposed, so. I have a team with me, uh, Dustin, uh, Dustin Layton's on behalf of, uh, the S R E I group, and then also, um, uh, Amy Dutt, uh, on behalf of Urban Wild. And she appeared to talk a little bit more about land school as well, so I'll yield the mic, maybe they'll vote, they want to add some stuff, but, uh, I'm Joe Place with Plan for Land. And, uh, happy to see you again, and wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, what we've compiled, so. Uh, the first slide that I have for you is the existing conditions for the property. Uh, this was a requirement of the P R C D code. Uh, we did an initial study to identify floodplain easements. Uh, they're all represented to some extent on this, uh, survey. And, uh, I'll kind of give an overview. Uh, there's hundred year, uh, as well as flood, floodway, uh, that exists along Duncan Run on the north side of the property. And I, I, I debated bringing in my laser pointer, but I didn't want to do that because I think people are seeing it from, from home as well, so. Uh, this, uh, where Duncan Run crosses, uh, you can see in hashed, which is probably a little bit better on the print and, uh, visual form, and you'll see, uh, where that floodplain exists. Uh, we kept development outside of that as far as the proposal. Um, our objective was to also keep the lots outside of it. Uh, there are portions of lots that are showing within the five hundred year floodplain, which is not traditionally represented on maps. Uh, but we did reflect it on the maps just to show that the septic fields and other improvements are outside of that area as well. Uh, this highlights a, a little bit about the two parcels, but the north parcel, uh, is, uh, running on Gorsuch Road. And, uh, center line of that goes back generally to the center line of Duncan Run, or the south property line, generally, generally the southern boundary, uh, that runs along Duncan Run. And then the property that fronts on Harlem Road, uh, backs up to that as well, and there's a portion that's, uh, kind of triangular up in the northwest corner that tucks in behind some property that was, uh, heated off with the Flings, uh, son was, uh, in that door, uh, before they sold the property. Uh, the, uh, parcel as it exists is sixty seven point nine two nine acres. As I know. Um, our team is, I get a little bit of, there are some that aren't, weren't able to make it tonight, and, uh, we'll get a, have more in-depth conversations with them in the future as this, uh, process evolves. As we discussed with the watershed committee last week, this is the process where we continue dialogue with you until we get a plan that you're satisfied with, before we can take it on to the trustees. So we're not here to ask for a vote tonight. We're asking, asking for dialogue on what we can do to make this application better. And to be back in front of you hopefully next month with a fine tuned application that addresses those comments and further that discussion. So, uh, the others would, that are been participating in this are civil engineer, uh, he's done a preliminary stormwater analysis. And, uh, what you see on the plans is a representation of that. We can speak to the matter of how that was prepared and, and what it entails. Um, that will be, uh, uh, further elaborated as we move forward, and I think Amy's prepared to talk a little bit about, uh, how those calculations generally are impacted by some of the open space that we have listed on here. Uh, additionally, we had a traffic engineer, uh, doing traffic study, as you saw in regional planning recommendations, uh, that we have to have a full blown, full blown traffic study to present for subdivision approval. Uh, any warranted improvements along the roadway would be discussed with the county as part of that subdivision approval. Uh, so, uh, look forward to presenting that data to the county after we nail down final design with you here. Uh, additionally, the, uh, surveyor, uh, Blue Church Surveys, uh, identified all the easements, so the statistics that you see in there in the net develop acreage that's identified on the plan uh, was provided by a surveyor, uh, Steve Newell from Blue Church. And, uh, we also had extensive soil tests done, two tests per lot, sometimes three or four, uh, to make sure we understand what's going on with the water table and per- perpulation and suitability for septic, so. Mitch String is listening there as well, and, uh, his report makes up probably half of our, uh, presentation to you. I can talk about the importance of that and why we present it in its full form, but, uh, each of those tests identifies the water table that's at that test site. And it, it ends up dictating design to some extent, so that's why I've included the entirety of it. Uh, the basis of conservation design, mainly for the benefit of those that are here, that aren't on the zoning commission, uh, that may not have been a part of the planning process. Uh, the reason why communities generally push toward it, uh, the, uh, wide open spaces, it helps inventory the primary and secondary conservation areas that we'd like to see, uh, preserved in a site. And I picked this one because it does have a, a ravine on the east, uh, right hand side of it, very similar to the Duncan Run, what we had. A wooded area of the site that, uh, ultimately lots get pushed into as part of a minimum zoning, so. Traditionally, we'd see, uh, two acre lots or five acre lots, that we, uh, have a large chunk of a floodplain that would be on those properties. And sometimes, uh, twenty to fifty percent of the lot ends up being suitable for development. Uh, the, uh, plan on the right, uh, takes that, uh, lot yield and reassigns it to, uh, areas of the site that are more suitable for development. But more importantly, uh, helps preserve some critical resources, uh, including, uh, views from the street. Older trees, things that need to be preserved, so the, the importance of what we went through in the design process, originally started with that sidewalk, so when we talk about the design, we'll talk about why the design looks the way it does in a relationship to a lot of what we heard from, uh, the zoning commission and trustees during the initial sidewalk. Generally, I can talk a lot more about why that on the right is recommended, but the fifty percent open space is generally a water, uh, quality buffer, uh, provides for different type of plant life, uh, provides for preservation of, uh, assets, also our amenities, um, critical resources. Also allows for trail networks, other active recreational uses. Traditionally, in conservation design, trail networks aren't as elaborate as this. Such as in your code, I call for fifteen percent of the open space to be suitable for active open space, uh, not for passive use. Uh, generally, we try to see conservation development more passive than active, uh, so something like this, and then extensive trail network. Uh, maybe for maintenance or something, but it isn't traditional what we would do in conservation subdivision. So the project, as we presented it to the township, uh, utilizes, uh, mainly the southern portion of the site where development more suitable. Uh, preserves at least a fifty foot buffer, in most cases, uh, a, uh, two hundred foot buffer from neighboring property lines. And then, uh, also looks at extensive preservation of the floodplain area to the north. There's two lots indicated on Gorsuch Road that you heard in these, uh, regional planning reports that were recommended not be platted, uh, to be kept, uh, separate from the development. Uh, we committed in the application to plat those two lots as a part of the development, so when we get into the technical discussion, we can talk about what that means for the actual application. But it would appear after conversations with Scott Sanders, they're recommending a divergence from the, uh, requirement for plating, just for those two lots. Uh, to ease the county's conversation about how those lots are created. Uh, they would rather them be created through what's called a no plat lot split approval. Uh, where a lot of the same protections can be put in place, but it allows them to meet the county's expectations of all lots within a subdivision being accessed off the internal street network.
So, given that also, that, that your overall acreage and how much acreage you need to spend aside for.
Yeah, so that was my discussion with Scott, so, uh, it's not ideal to be sitting here with conflicts with county and the township, but, um, what his motive is. Uh, he would like to see, uh, those lots not platted because there's stipulations to come on the plat as far as dedication of roadway. And he felt like that wasn't necessary with those two lots. Do you require a plat? Uh, it would appear that we have to plat that portion of the subdivision as a separate subdivision, not necessarily just a separate phase of the subdivision. Uh, it's not uncommon to plat lots that have public road frontage. But the county has adopted, the county engineer has adopted a rule that they'd rather see where there are public roads, they would like to see all lots in that subdivision act as all of public roads. Not reasonable to squeeze two more lots in on the south side, and it's also not, uh, realistic to think that, uh, just eliminating two lots in this design would help save anything. Uh, the goal is to, uh, ensure some avenue of public private, uh, ownership on the north side, and they're both with a shared access drive. Uh, the goal is i- ideally to minimize the impact on Gorsuch and make it feel more like a traditional, um, traditional subdivision, be surrounded by ample open space, so. Um, we're open to the discussion, and we can talk with, uh, Justin Longeager as well, but, um, we're open to discussion on what that looks like, but we were willing to do a subdivision plat for those two lots. It just seems like that's in conflict with what the county's recommendation. So my resolution out of that is if you went back to and say we have to plat those, it might be that we have to approach the county and do a separate subdivision plat with adequate open space for those two lots, so it might be the entirety of the Gorsuch lot is platted first, and then we could come back and plat the rest of it. Uh, it is our interest to plat that separately or to split those separately from the rest of it, because road construction can take, uh, time. And, uh, it's also recommended to be phased, uh, internally just between there to have the possibility of two phases on the south side of the project, so. Uh, to be able to get ahead of, uh, any type of road construction and create those lots would ensure, uh, property ownership, uh, on the north side to be secured before construction complete on the south side.
Well, if, um, two, two lots on Gorsuch Road are not platted as part of the, uh, something, uh, running the state.
Yes.
Then. Are you going to be able to apply with P R C D?
Yes, so it's not.
I'm confused by what they're telling you. Doesn't make sense.
So, sure. So, uh, Orange Township, I use them as an example, somewhat of your neighbor. Um, we've done, uh, S F P R D rezoning planned district. Uh, we've done road frontage, uh, splits essentially as a part of the S F P R D. They're not platted, uh, we have to actually ask for divergence through the, the uh, subdivision for the P R D approval process, so. Just like the, the P R C D, we would be asking for divergence, and we'd have to add that divergence request to have a no plat approval lot split. Uh, one of the stipulations they put in was we weren't providing open space, but that they asked that we plat or we record a tree preservation easement over the required open space before creating the no plat. We've done three of those in the last year, uh, where it's two to three lots that are getting created, uh, just because they have a lot of small pockets, and they're not recommending straight zoning for any type of, uh, future use. Uh, it's not ideal to do it without open space. I'd like to see it as open space. So in an instance here, uh, my conversation with Scott Sanders would be that we would plat, or we would, uh, split and put a, a deed restriction on property as no bill, uh, to preserve it as, uh, open space. It takes away none of the, uh, restrictions, uh, as far as you guys enforcing the P S F for the P R C D, too many acronyms, the main conservation district overlay, so your zoning would still stay in effect over that non-platted land. Uh, but it would allow deed restrictions to help double and help enforce that. Uh, the plat is really the reason why it's required with planned districts and not traditionally, say, with, uh, lot splits where you rezone land from AR one to FR one. Uh, the reason why that plat's typically required is it helps ensure that easements are, uh, bound to, uh, all the county offices that are put in place, so if there's a restriction there that you want to see such as open space, we can create that at township level. The county's just saying that they don't necessarily need to be a part of that, um, the creation of that. But that means that you can still regulate it as a P R C D development. Uh, your zoning office would enforce open space restrictions that are in the development plan. We would also have deed restrictions that would allow the H O A, and then ultimately the, the C C R, the acronym C C R's, uh, the covenants that were presented to you in draft form would also include those lots. It would provide the opportunity, uh, how they're addressed within their H O A, so they'd have another, another level of, uh, potential protection uh, that they would also be included in it. They don't, don't have to be platted to be a part of the C C R's. Uh, many of those lot splits that we created, we had a request to go to the neighboring H O A and ask if they would allow that lot to join their H O A. So, uh, once created, uh, we would go in and petition that that lot could become a part of the H O A, pay the news, be restricted by their covenants and restrictions, so. Uh, there is an option. The nice thing about this is we're ahead of all that. We haven't put the C C R's in place. So, uh, we can actually get those two lots incorporated in it before they're generated, uh, and they'll just become a part of the, the association as it's platted. Uh, for the protection of you, and what I would recommend is, uh, we include a no bill lot for that, and then we could always come back and plat the no bill lot as a part of the subdivision. My client would just retain ownership of it. And then at the time that we come in with the first phase, we would plat that open space, so you'll also get the protection of the plat on the open space. The only thing it wouldn't be on is the two lots that front on Gorsuch themselves. But again, when you sign the, the lot split, you can require any type of easements you want to see in place or anything else that would be a part of it. Um, and I, I didn't approach it that way because I felt like we should just do a plat, but the county disagreed, so that's why we're having this conversation.
So, if I wanted to make sure that the P R C D, and then once it's in place, and you just stated that.
Sure.
Uh, if it's, uh, don't tell approved by trustees, then everything is to be approved plat.
Yeah.
With the whole.
Yes.
And what you're showing me is that it.
Under percent. Yeah, and we could put notes on the plat as well, so then we could put place easements. The, the downfall of easements on those lots is the, the septic systems have to stay ten feet outside of any easements. So to put easements over the lot, say, for example, uh, to put restrictions in place would be pretty difficult, so it's a lot easier to do that through deed restrictions if you want to do that, so. We, we'd be open to that discussion as part of this, and obviously they're already part of the commitments that we made in the plan. The only difference is, uh, if you're supportive of the county's recommendation, we would be including a divergence request to address the county's comment and make sure that lot one and two on the north side of development, that front on Gorsuch would be excluded from the plat requirement. Very tech- technical discussion to have early on in this conversation, so I, uh, I appreciate everybody's time and listening to that. It is important, um, I will say, but I appreciate everybody listening to that.
A new twist.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, not the phone, it's, I, oh, Scott and I spent over an hour on the phone just back and forth about how that actually was supposed to be addressed, and that sounds like the most logical way to go. Um, that being said, uh, the design is around four, four separate, uh, outlets, uh, four separate collection points on the property, uh, but those are routed toward, uh, individual outlets, and I want to talk a little bit about that because we met the stormwater, uh, committee, subcommittee last week, uh, really good conversation, very important discussion for neighbors as far as where water leaves the site and how that's handled, so I want to give a little bit of time to do that, and as I move on to one of these next slides, I'll, I'll let Amy maybe elaborate on this as well. Uh, the four basins, uh, talk about the two on the north side that started with. Uh, the one in the northwest corner, uh, there's water that, uh, leaves the site that would head across, uh, the neighboring property that's owned by, uh, uh, Mr. Pl- Mr. and Mrs. Pling. Uh, they, uh, they recently built a house on, uh, what I would call a flag lot. Uh, they've got ample acreage there. A lot of their land sits in the floodplain. Uh, as it would exit the lot there, it would go eventually into the Duncan Run, so our proposal is to intercept that water. And I send it eastbound across the, uh, the back of this project to the northeast basin that's shown. Uh, the reason why we create two separate basins, it allows us to minimize the, uh, the, um, area contributed to those. And that would allow that north, uh, north basin, I'm calling them basins because we're going to talk about ponds versus wetlands, but, um, the, the north basin uh, would be, uh, then allowed to be discharged at, uh, with an orifice into the Duncan Run. So a little bit about stormwater, uh, we can't increase the flow of water, the rate of water leaving the site. Um, may have additional capacity that's generated because we're not allowing all the water to run off. Uh, it's not going to run off like it always was. Once land's disturbed, it always changes, so we're, uh, we're directing water toward those basins. It's held, and instead of being discharged like a farm pond where it'd be a four or a six inch, uh, tile, eight inch tile that discharges, uh, whatever rate, just keep water flowing. Uh, it's held back, and, uh, typically it's, uh, an orifice, it's in a couple inches in diameter. All the water's held and discharged through that orifice. Uh, so those ponds fill up, and then they slowly dissipate. Uh, they dissipate at the same rate water left the site now, or leaves the site now. So, uh, that comparison put out, um, we'll go into some more of the technical details of that maybe later on, but the discussion is, um, water cannot leave the site faster than it entered, so the reason why those basins are shown on there is collected. Uh, we had some discussion about whether ponds or wetlands would be more appropriate, and I'll talk a little bit about that after I talk about the south too. Uh, the one in the southwest corner has a similar design. It would be, uh, by design, outfitted at the roadside ditch. Uh, that roadside ditch currently takes water, uh, equivalent to, uh, what's being held in that basin and what would be discharged from that basin. Uh, we can't increase the flow, we can decrease the flow, so as part of the design, sometimes there's over engineering to slow it down, so. Uh, one of the things we can say is that if there's ten gallons per minute going through there now, we might make it eight, but we can't make it twelve, so. Uh, that water is going to be slowed down, it's not, um, it's going to be kept the same, it's not slowed down. Uh, the main basin is actually that one in the middle of the site on the south side. Uh, that basin discharges to a grass swale. Uh, that's where the majority of the site currently discharges. And that's why that basin's a little bit bigger than the other ones. And that's why that basin's a little bit bigger than the other ones. Uh, all these basins are bigger than what a traditional pond would be designed for. Uh, they're laid out according to our engineer for the idea that they could be wetlands and they're intended to be wetlands. Uh, so as we go through this process, there's a reason why they're some shown such, so large. Um, but again, they're not ponds. Uh, the way they're shown on there and colored on there, it makes it look like ponds. Uh, these would be designed as uh wetland habitats. And uh, Amy can talk a little bit more about plant life. Um, and I think Mark dearly, he might be joining us at the next meeting or uh in the future. Uh, he'll be helping with the design of those. So he can talk a little bit more also about uh wetland design and how that actually works out. Uh, in general, uh, each of these lots is about half the size of what your code would prevent in the F R one district because we're offsetting that and creating that same equivalency or more in open space. So uh, that's why there's thirty-three, almost thirty-four acres of open space that are identified. Uh, that helps contribute to the twenty-six lots within the subdivision. So in reality, each lot has more than an acre of open space that's dedicated to it. So twenty-six lot, thirty, thirty-four acres. Math is, there's going to be a almost an acre and a half per lot that's dedicated in open space. The uh, minimum lot size is one acre according to our plan. Uh, we talked about true conservation development. If we really wanted the true conservation development, your code calls for much smaller lot. We're honoring your request we heard from you at past meetings about trying to make sure that that minimum lot size doesn't get too small. Uh, ideally, we'd like to see more of the site in open space. Uh, and Amy can talk a little bit about where that open space might be more appropriate. But in general, we're, we're honoring your, your request uh to keep it a minimum of one acre lot there. Uh, each lot would have a minimum frontage, uh, one hundred feet. Many lots have well in excess of that, but uh, for the lot with the depth ratio, we're specifying that no more than three hundred feet in depth. Uh, to honor a three to one ratio. Uh, there are some lots that get a little bit deeper and traditionally have to cover their septic system uh there on the north side of the, the project. Uh, the uh, set, front setbacks would be sixty feet from the center of the road. We concluded for discussions with the zoning commission uh during the site walk that we might want to vary that a little bit. So we've offered a five foot variance. Uh, so if somebody builds, they still have to be sixty feet from the middle of the road, but they can be sixty, they have to be sixty-five if their neighbor's sixty. Uh, if they're sixty-two, they're, they're going to have to be at sixty-seven. Uh, when they hit sixty-five, that next house can come back up and be at sixty. So they always have to be five foot of variance from the neighboring lot. Uh, since well, development will likely be built by a custom builders, something we can talk about with each custom builder as it goes through. But uh, ideally, that's supposed to be discussed and debated ahead of time. What's shown on there is a slight variation, but each building's not going to be a block. So there's going to be a lot more variations than just setback. Uh, additionally, it's a twelve and a half foot side setback guaranteed a twenty-five foot separation between structures. Uh, also a thirty foot rear setback for the principal structure and a fifteen foot for accessory. Uh, accessory structures are limited according to the, the architectural standard. Uh, additionally, minimal uh square footage for the uh house, twenty-two hundred square feet. And uh, we got a uh, set a forty-five foot, um, that's in your code today, uh, height restriction. Most homes are going to be two stories. So they're, they're not going to get anywhere close to the forty-five uh foot height restriction. Uh, and you have a twenty-five foot accessory building restriction.
Just real quick, I think the forty-five feet is in Article thirteen.
Okay.
Is every other article thirty-five. We went through.
Yeah.
Zoning resolutions to make everything thirty-five.
Yeah.
So that, you know, did you get fixed on this?
Okay. So that might be a discussion in thirty-five. That's pretty traditional for a single family development. So I figured out what the case, we just mirrored what was in the code.
And that, if it's all A R and F R all thirty-five.
Okay. Not a, not a point of conflict. Uh, we weren't excited to come in here and talk about skyscrapers. So if we're good there. Uh, architectural detail, we put uh the nitty gritty details in the development text. So you can go through um, the look and style is not going to be a, a vinyl sided uh.
Could you go back one slide?
Yep.
The square footage?
Yes.
Is that the intended square footage or that mirrors being?
I believe uh, this is uh intended square footage. I don't. I'd have to look at your code again.
Well, I, I think.
Specifically call out.
I, I think well, yeah, code, I think you've got. You've got two thousand, they're already part of the.
It might be in the C C R's, it might be a, you know, three thousandish or something like that.
Uh, so page, page, page eight, mark. Or six. Five. On that page, you missed it at twenty-three. And then in Article eighty-five. And uh, we also did something difficult here. I think you say that six, three thousand, but there's a discrepancy in the document.
Okay.
In one place says twenty-two hundred square feet, little house.
Yep.
dwellings. And another place that says two thousand.
It might use who's finding, you just. Okay. Yeah. So the ability to go as low as twenty-two hundred for finished board would be intense. We can correct that three thousand uh reference.
I think that's, I just wanted to point it out.
Yeah. The market's going to, obviously dictate probably size on the, I, I don't think you're going to get uh super small homes, but we wanted to be able to provide some flexibility in design. Uh, discussion I knew we've had with you before, uh, just about the, the general housing market. And especially if septic uh poses the constraint that we'd be allowed to go down to twenty-two hundred square feet for a specific lot.
Yeah. And then for the maximum dwelling height, um, we would have to then go ahead and change that to forty-five thirty-five.
Yeah, I think we're in, in both of that. It's not a, yeah, like I said, we weren't, weren't here to.
Well, we don't want, we wouldn't want to improve it.
Sure. Okay. No, that makes sense. Anything else on that slide before we move on? That is the main development tables. I summarized them here. So the more details obviously in the text. I just didn't want to take everybody's time. We're here to hear the public's comments. So.
And, and you know, of course, regarding the uh lot, uh, this minimum and maximum, find it. And when I looked at it, I thought, well, seems like that might be an issue. Minimum width must be uh more than a hundred. And. But. I guess might be depending upon uh where we're measuring it. But some of, if you look at the frontage, there's a couple of lots, less than a.
Yeah, I, I think there was.
I'd say.
Yeah, I think there was some discussion about that, that width being met at the building line. Uh, and that's kind of what the spirit intent, what we typically see with cul-de-sacs. Uh, so mainly the end of the cul-de-sac where you're going to see that conflict. And uh, we meet that lot width at the building line. That's pretty traditional. We need to specify that.
I didn't know what that just, the feedback at the building line.
Yeah.
Pro- like feeling.
Yeah, it, it definitely is on each of these. We made a point to make sure at the building line, we had a hundred foot or more of width. Um, and it would really pose for those uh two in the southeast corner. That's where you're going to see that constraint uh maybe more prominent than other lots. There might be some on the outside of the curvature that we had something similar, just trying to uh create a more appealing uh street.
That would be the only two that I think I saw. I know there's only two on top and I went through and looked at.
Okay.
I, I had a question about that.
Yes.
Um, if, if you have um, a lot size of, of an acre.
Mm-hmm.
Forty-three thousand square. And a maximum of the block depth with three hundred feet. The math tells me they happen to have a minimum lot width of a hundred and forty-five. There's a math. Three hundred five, one thousand twenty-five is. There you go.
You know that math too. That makes sense. Yeah. So I think the minimum that we have in most cases, you're seeing a hundred and forty in width where the lots are deeper at, at the three. That's actually at a three twenty it looks like. Yes, we may, uh, we may need to amend that to three to twenty. It looks like that, that change might've happened on the last rendition as well.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, the, the goal is maintain a three to one ratio. So uh, where they go to one forty in width, which are those um, smaller lots, I'd say more traditional lots that's on the north side of the street. Uh, those are three hundred and twenty feet in depth. So uh, it actually, the lot depth should be uh three hundred and twenty or less.
And would that, they need to do minimum lot width at the building line of four foot five?
It would. One, yeah, one forty, I think is what uh noted on the plan. One forty and that gets us to a one point oh three acre wide. But like I said, the minimums aren't, the goal is not to hit the minimum or the maximum on all of the lots. So to provide some flexibility in design. We might still keep that hundred foot just because that gives flexibility at the end of the cul-de-sac and on the curvature of the road. But uh, we would probably increase the depth to three twenty to be more reflective of what's going on there.
Um.
Now, now that answered. So in reality, we're never going to have a one hundred and a three hundred foot lot. I guess that's the way to say it. But we are, we are honoring, there's going to be all these constraints planned due to each other. I think the goal was for the average lot depth. It wasn't probably our engineer shortened the road a little bit uh to help preserve some more open space. We hit that three twenty. I just didn't catch it in the text. So we'll get that noted on there. And it should be the average lot depth um would not exceed three twenty. Obviously, some of those dimensions are over three twenty, but it should be the average lot depth that governs to that.
Right. The only other thing, um, I know you, you, a five foot variation from the front setback from one with, for adjacent houses.
Correct.
Um, is that a visible difference?
It is. Yeah, it, it requires a, a, and it's from the front plane. So the actual house likely have porch or something else that would protrude. So it'd be the front, front plane of that porch that would ultimately be the dictated uh setback difference. But yeah, what it does, it provides um flexibility, but also pushes the creativity, uh, especially on the curvature. Then you're not going to see a row of homes. You're going to see something staggered. So five foot might not seem like much, but I think with custom design homes and not production build homes, which you're going to see here, uh, it's going to, it's going to just going to create a little bit more interest, I guess, if I don't mean to say.
I mean, I. I think words, I, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, I would say um, doesn't sound like much, but it doesn't take much to not look like a production built project. So um, I, I don't think we'd want to encourage super long driveways here. And in reality, each home might be angled or differentiated. The goal is just to make sure that people are aware, we're not looking for uh production built apartments.
Yeah. Um, I've got one other public thing on that page that I'm not, it's not. It's not, yeah.
Okay.
You still want to talk about?
Yeah, I, I like other things other than math.
Um, so under C, committed uses?
Yes.
Um, you have home occupation.
Yes.
Um, we have it. Now it's going to become limited and expanded home occupation. And I don't think we have either in, in the.
Within the P R C.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I was envisioning limited home occupations being the only one that would likely be permitted here. Um, I didn't list any conditional uses for that reason. Uh, but I also didn't specify. So if we wanted to eliminate conditional uses as an option, I think we'd eliminate the expanded home occupation, which may not ensue more for uh subdivision like this. And yeah, um, I can let Justin talk maybe a little bit more as, as you might have more comments about that. But uh, I think the, the recommendation would be to do limited home occupations, but not to allow what in term of expanded home occupation where people might use an outbuilding, for example, for their home business.
Now, that's what, if we're going to expand the home occupation, we could have employees coming to the site.
Correct.
You could have inventory and so.
Yeah, not traditional of a development like this. So.
Correct. Yeah. Limited home occupation I see as maybe more of a.
Correct. Yeah, and you might have, uh, you may have one employee on a limited home occupation, but.
I don't think we do.
Yeah. Okay. So the, I think within the terms of what you have a limited is probably more traditional for a development like this. We can explore that before the next meeting and make sure that's minimum. Um, because we haven't dealt into it too much, but I do remember in the discussions uh looking at conditional use. It didn't make sense that any of those conditional uses would fit on these properties, including that standard home occupation.
The law may not be specifically listed in the P R C D. If it's identified and reverted, then it will be part of the P R C D.
So I think I could put limited and.
I would suggest you put limited.
We could be clear to call out.
I mean, I, clearly I would not want to see expanded home occupation.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. Limited.
Limited.
You said, you know, somebody that operates a, a home office that is in the internet.
Yeah. I can't recall all the conditional uses, but using churches and all the other things that you're going to potentially run into day care centers. It's not likely, it's not something that you're, I want to see on the list. Yeah, no. So I, I think limiting the uses back to what was in the proposals ideal and using the word limited, the home occupation makes sense.
I think unless you had something else in mind, if you do, you put that back to yourself.
So we can talk about that next time. I, I think the intent is to limit the use of single family residential, one principal use and then also the limited home occupation. Everybody, I know the work from home craze is expanded, but we don't want to see an excavator, for example, come in here with bulldozer and start storing it in our outbuildings.
Exactly.
The, the goal is to keep it to those limited uses.
There's only, we're still on this, getting, um, um, the uh section A is on the, does anything change? Um, you might do, I said, they changed that to that. Page thirteen, that's two, which I think is why, what, what it means that. A R one goes away.
With the overlay. Okay. Yep.
So there is a paragraph, there's a paragraph on page thirteen or two in the, in the.
Okay. I'll make sure we get that noted. I'm not taking notes, but. I have, I'll, yeah, thank you. I uh, do appreciate that. I figured the, I, I knew this is your first day with new minutes, right? So uh, yeah, minutes. So we'll, we'll have a good time with them. No, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, I definitely uh, we'll make sure those are consistent. Recorded. Perfect. Anything else before we move on to architectural restrictions? Architectural standards? Thing we'll move on.
So you said signage, there's no signage posted. Is the street name?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to have county regulated signage for street, uh, street signage. I understand from prior inter- interaction in Harlem Township, but not interest to uh identify individual neighborhoods. So.
Is, is the street going to be called Duncan Estates then? Is that?
I, I don't know. We've made that commitment on the plan. So we might, we might have some flexibility with that. But uh, I think right now it's called Road A and it's not intended to be.
Yeah, we should have seen it that, then that sounds. Road A.
Yeah. But uh, if there is a request that we provide road names, we could write that part of the zoning request, but we often have to prove it part of the, the engineering plan.
Okay. I was just curious because it said no signage in here and just checking.
Yeah, we, uh, Road A and Road B were temporary roads just for reference. Um, ideally, we'd like to make sure we have a unique road for public safety reasons. So we'll have to figure out what, what's a good bit, have to get through that process.
We'll just, we'll think the uh, town road and township road.
Uh, my understanding that any roads created in Delaware County is passed on to the township unless uh identified as a collector road. So these would both be uh township roads.
Uh, not to take us backwards, but. Um, going back to Harvey Al, two lots on Gorsuch.
Yeah, that was a fun talk. I like that.
Yeah. Point I, that, that relative reminder point I think is that even though we order shows on the website, on their website, when I looked up, that both of these parcels are in West Virginia. Back according to the post office, parcels on Gorsuch.
Okay. They have a separate mailing address.
They have separate, they have separate mail delivery.
Okay.
Delivery from, some very, not from West Virginia.
Well, that's a good point. And that might be part of why they requested that we uh split them out as well. Because any lot in a subdivision have to have collecting mail at a mailbox, at a central mailbox. Where uh, I, I believe these two lots up on uh the north street would, would then qualify for uh individual mail service.
Yep.
But the, the new, the new standard that we've been having is that we've discussed uh where collective mail would, would be uh potentially be appropriate. That's why some of the green space does extend out from Road A. Uh, is uh, so that we can provide a collection mailboxes there for uh individuals coming to collect their mail at a more central location.
The, the, the other thing is, um, I think you, when you came to us, it would be uh net developable length is, is on both lots, forty-four eight.
Mm-hmm.
Um, hundred point six gave us the twenty-six. Building.
Mm-hmm.
How does that change if we, if they force you to take those three lots out of the development?
Uh, so it wouldn't change because they'd still be a part of the S, the, the P R C D. Uh, they'd still be a part of this development. So it wouldn't change all our, our net developable calculations for how the number of lots.
So they'll be part of the development, but.
Not platted.
Really, my understanding is it just sort of changes the order of how, how this all happens. And if we do the plating everything ahead of time, then they can come right in and do the P, P R C D just like we had said with the total acreage and the developable acreage. Right? Like as long as you do that step first.
Then we, we can follow with the subdivision process. So I have a schedule in here when we talk about what that looks like. But in reality, those two blocks would uh, would likely be after this takes effect. Um, and the township uh agrees to a plan and we approve a plan, it goes through the trustee and we, uh, we get approved. Then we can come back and ask the zoning inspector to sign a lot split agreement for those two lots. Then we can come back and ask the zoning inspector to sign a lot split agreement for those two lots. And any open space, you want us to commit you as a part of it, uh to generate those uh upfront. In reality, um, yeah, they're, they're gonna come with whatever deep restrictions you guys put on them. And also, uh, somebody came in to pull a building permit, say for uh Harlem Road, it's a part of the P R C D. So they can't pull a building permit without going through and getting the plan executed. So uh if there's any deviation in this plan, they'd have to come back in front of you, uh otherwise your zoning inspector is not gonna sign a, a lot split or a building permit, a zoning permit for somebody to bill on, on, on any portion of this property, because it's part of this plan development.
Yeah, that's what my point earlier, I wanted to make clear, but what controls is the, quote, of the P R C D.
Correct, yeah, by floating the cloud over you, like you, we're essentially self committing to these restrictions. Uh, in Ohio, uh, you can't, the township can't zone property into a planned district without the property owner requesting that. Uh, the reason why is because of the tight constriction restrictions that are being agreed to. So uh this is a mutually agreed upon plan, it can only be built in conjunction with what you guys are approving here. So whether we platen or not, the protection's still there, it's just traditionally the reason why lots in planned districts are platted is for that extra level of protection. The county is just saying they don't need that extra level of protection on these two lots up on Gorsuch, and they don't want it. And it, you, you ought to keep track of them either way, um, the flat again is not a township document. You guys sign the flat, just like you sign the lot split, it's just uh ultimately the county won't be a part of the enforcement for those two lots. Um, so they're still bound with zoning agreements here, we can't come in and, if sewer becomes available, can't come in and create four lots up there without coming back through this process if you. Not give anybody what you wanna do, yeah. I got some pretty houses to work at, you know, with the, all right. So um, we, we've provided some examples, I just put the pictures up here, cause I didn't wanna belabor all the texts. But the idea is we're not creating a production build uh process here. Uh, the builders have been identified, or that are working with my client to uh potentially building within the development, would all be custom trap builders uh or custom builders, uh so you're, they're not gonna be traditional of what you're gonna see in a, um, maybe a, I won't take my name, I, I won't name anybody. So um, you, you're not gonna see a cookie cutter uh development, you're gonna see something that's a lot more, you know. Uh, we can bring in specific floor plans, uh if we go through this process, we're not individually building each of these. So once the builders are identified, that's something we can share with the zoning office, so you guys can see those well. Um, as far as the commitments that we can make as a part of the zoning process, uh everything that's identified in there will be met. And that can be enforced through your, your individual zoning permits on the lots to ensure that each lot is designed in such a way that it meets the architectural standard. There'll also be an H O A uh review, so the developers in control of that. So if he sells, uh, say five lots to a custom builder, they come in and start building lots and they're building, or they're proposing something contrary, you're not gonna allow them to build those either. So there's multiple levels of protection within the planned district, to make sure that it doesn't come to you with something that's not gonna meet your uh, your expectations within the development text. More pretty homes, and uh I'm gonna pass it to Amy, and go and hear somebody else talk to her tonight, no? Yeah.
Um, so on page nine, when you describe the standards, um, you make sure the, um, building materials, including, um, all natural materials. And then you did, then it's by more siding, you know, so I would consider a natural, a natural material.
Yes.
If you don't, with something like brick, where I would consider more, water is a natural, uh material. Um, for roofing, it looks like your evidence allows asphalt, you know, that it mentions around slate or metal or even though some of your pictures, at least uh we're going to force there, uh, looks like there's uh metal, you know, by them.
Yeah, there might be some accent roofing that's identified on there, I don't, just you wanna talk a little bit about architectural.
Touch base real quick. Yeah, so I think, um, yeah, like, I think, sorry. Uh, so we do, um, while there is, you know, we do anticipate having the opportunity for a hardy cementitious uh plank system. Just stylistically, that seems to be kind of where the, the trend is going. I do think we may make some modifications to accommodate uh sections of metal roofing, uh whether that's copper or maybe some small areas of standing scene as an accent, so I, then maybe a tweak we'll make on the next round.
But nothing like slate or. Um, and yeah, I know that, that.
Stupid, I'm gonna take that, but.
Certainly would be traditional.
I mean, we could definitely accommodate that, um, we were pretty particular about designing ourselves, so it'll go through. But slate and even a potentially, we could, you know, be willing to look at like a, a wood shingle as well in some locations. So maybe we need to relook at that and not kind of.
I don't think, I mean, there are some styles, but I don't think we're, I'll. Anything appropriate for, for the training or.
I think the spirit and behind the discussion was the warning for the design type of asphalt shingles, to ensure they weren't cheap shingles and we're not providing cheaper. So uh I think we could elaborate on that as part of the design, but the reason.
They do also make metal roofs now that have the shingle and slate look style.
Yeah, yeah.
And longevity wise, the metal roof is gonna.
I think we could be more inclusive, I, I think as the nature of it would say that we weren't gonna provide a, a basic uh asphalt shingle for roofing. We're gonna provide an architectural significant uh shingle. So um we could take that a little further in the discussion to make sure that's reflected the next time you see that.
Uh, so on page nine, um, at twelve driveway, um, concrete asphalt, agres, brick, cobblestone, gravel. Um, is there any provisions for more, for more pervious driveway, uh than in pervious?
I think we could open that discussion, typically the township will push us for more pervious pavement, so um, I think we could open that discussion, though, what that, what that, what you're looking for there.
Some from the ability to, really nice, that's all some of the.
I think there's opportunities with pavement to create permeable pavement, um, unless you're looking at gravel or something that might be a little, a little less standard, um, I think permeable payments would definitely be permitted. I don't know, we wanna mandate uh per, permeable payment, uh just to the design of these. Like, the goal of conservation development is create shorter driveways, and then also we want them to stand up. Um, maybe it'll be there eventually, I, maybe there's different experiences with that, but um we've tended to keep pervial payments for like overflow parking in areas that don't get traffic all the time. Uh, like with these, these driveways that may get traffic, so it's not something I'd necessarily encourage. Um, just cause it doesn't seem like it, it would be a, uh, it would hold up like what you're gonna want to hold up there. But if there's something you wanna talk about, I think we're open to that discussion here.
I, I would leave it up to you, but I mean, I've seen discussions of, of permeable block, if you, in driveway rather than out the continued.
Yeah.
Asphalt. The other question I had is, why do you need a driveway when you don't have variety?
So uh, most of the photos here are side load, there's one that has a front load, but it's, it's recessed back. Actually, I think the other one over here too has, uh, one of the top left also has a front load garage, but it's recessed back. Uh, the goal is not to have, uh, I think they call them snout houses, right? So uh you're gonna see that with a lot of the custom builders, that they don't wanna see garage doors in front of the street. If they do, they wanna let them do single vague doors that don't exceed ten by ten. You don't wanna see an R V uh parking uh door coming off the road. So uh there might be further restrictions that go into the C C R that you guys aren't even asked and enforced, but the goal is to really create a higher standard for that.
So for number two, when it says all detached dwellings, she'll have, at a minimum, a two car garage with panel garage door, that is an attached garage, correct?
Correct. Yeah, I think the, the interest, if they're gonna add additional, if you have detached, um, if they'd have the ability to do that, yeah. Yeah, you can.
Um, and then when it gets to architectural standards, and I did, did have one question down there, number eleven. Um, it says, the final location of desired outcomes and final result, construction with the final result, like, who's the staff? Who's the staff?
What's that? Yeah, that might have been copied from uh some of the architectural standards I grabbed from a, where we pulled our architectural standard. Uh, we debated them quite a bit and I didn't catch that. So uh generally, that should be your, your planner, uh, or your zoning inspector that would catch, um, or have the ability to administratively review those, so.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out, one, make sure who knew what this was.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it might be something that you just described.
Yeah, I believe uh that was in reference to the city of Pasco's uh staff, uh, but we'll, we'll get that fixed.
Um, amazing, uh, I just wanna check with regarding to the current reference, got a painting, or you know what, you may have a, maybe Russell's in that based on the discussion you had. With regard to the, the potential painting.
Uh, let's talk about that, I um, I don't believe so, uh, the, the, no, um, the way it's identified on there, phase one would be lots one and two in the northeast corner. Uh, we identified that phase line, I believe, is it called? I don't see the call out on it, um, it's called out in the text that lots one and two would be phase one, and then uh we would have a portion of the southern site that could be phase two or, or phase three, or maybe all plotted together. Um, but it, the goal is to essentially uh minimize the amount of uh disturbance. So there's a green space corridor that we might end up connecting between the pond and the north area, just so that you could potentially take a trail through there someday. That would likely be the division line between both phases, uh so that we could create a uh turnaround, but uh not go too far. It's probably a temporary turnaround we'll have to put on that street in order to accomplish the phase.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Appreciate that, no, we'll revisit, but I, I believe the text that we provided, uh, the goal was just to provide an opportunity to equally divide the, the south side for phase.
On the map, we're showing the uh, the walkway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we're showing the walkway going north, uh, along, we were paralyzed, so.
Over Duncan Run, yeah, I wondered if it had.
Duncan Run, so I had a question about.
Yeah, I thi- I think we wanna provide that opportunity, I don't think there's a commitment and development to fulfill that, but we did wanna reflect the uh, the interest uh to provide that connection in the future. Um, Amy can talk a little bit about the impacts of crossing Duncan Run, it might be something that should be done as part of a regional trail. When and if you ever wanna cross it. But I, I do think uh there's an avenue there and a corridor there that would, that would facilitate a trail connection up to Gorsuch. Uh, if you have a trail network that's available there, and it might be that this H O A would help participate in building that in the future. Uh, but it would kind of makes, not make sense probably to build that in day one of building the trail.
Are you um, having a contact with, what is it, A P there? Uh, to, to discuss with them your, your plans of, of uh wildflowers or whatever, what I read here, and a trail and all of them, and what do they allow?
Yeah, uh, none of that is contrary to their, their best practices book that they provide. Um, we will have to have an in-depth conversation with them about the design under there. Um, they do not ask for motor manicures, but they do not allow for tree planting. So uh everything that's shown on there is consistent with what we've seen them approve in other projects. We have no reason to believe that they would have uh conflict with it. They actually enjoy the trail access, it gives them avenues uh to get in there as well. Uh, but the, the wildflowers and things, if they're damaged as a part of maintenance on the utility line, it'd be the responsibility to, you know, H O A to work with A P to get it fixed, or the H O A to get those uh repaired. They're obviously not gonna wanna see it damaged as a part of this, in the backyard.
And one other thing on your architectural standard stuff, um, outdoor lighting.
Yeah.
I don't see lighting addressed anywhere, uh, um, it means something that's been this close together, and I think you wanna be real careful. You know, all out, uh, down facing, outdoor lighting, every time in the dark lane, people, people hang around the six oh five and the lights from that damn blue building there, one, you can't get on the six oh five. I'm reminded how important down, or facing or lighting is.
I was gonna mention those lights too, I don't know, those lights are ridiculous.
Sure, they're, they're clearly, they're trying to turn.
Yeah, they're just too bright.
True.
Very disruptive. But they don't wanna see that.
Yeah, we, we can make sure there's language included for that.
Um, so I have a question under architectural standards, so it's number ten. Minor changes to the fi- the final development site plans can be made with administrative approval. Who is the administrative approval?
So uh, that's something I think you guys could determine, uh, I'll say some communities say it just has to come back to the zoning commission. Some say that it could be the chairman of the zoning commission and staff. Um, because you guys don't have other P R C Ds, I realize this isn't something you've got too far into, but I, I would like to acknowledge that uh coming back and going through the entire development plan process for a minor, we uh say a lot that um just needs reconfigured or something, shouldn't probably be administrated by them, so.
Or since you're for that, yeah.
There, there's a call out for amendments, and I think you can declare whether it's minor or major, correct, yeah. So I, I think we, we could, we could uh lend that. Yeah, so um, we could defer to that, actually, I think some of the texts that you're referring to might be uh referenced to that as well. Cause I think we copy and paste that into the text, so it, it should be there, um, but yeah, that should be the intent.
It should be, you really, you're going back to us, meaning they, they haven't given that, you know, it's been.
I think that they don't, I think that it's, it's, there's no information.
It does.
No, but, but it's, but, but for engineering, they're only well, they're, they don't need to go to this whole, I should.
Yeah, it doesn't have to.
Well, it just comes in here and they look at it, it's a pair of stuff, and the temp was, and it differed very much.
And there's a form that we used in the past, not for P R C Ds, that's for here, um, for a minor.
I, I think as an example, uh, minors, we, we're not decreasing the amount of, there's special qualifications traditionally, but we're not decreasing the amount of open space. For example, maybe we build one house on Gorsuch and the others, but there would be an amendment process that we would bring that house down and take it apart of the street if we found it was better suited there, after we went through the engineering process and found out some constraint exists. So there, there's usually tweaks that occur during the engineering process. My experience, we'll bring that, sit down with, whether it's the chairman, the zoning commissioner, and planner, sit down, we figure out exactly, we talk through those amendments, what they are, and to figure out uh if it's something we need to bring back in front of you or not. But there's traditionally always some small amendments through the engineering process, so, um, don't be blind, in fact, we have to have that dialogue in some way.
So can I ask, since we've not done one of these before, and there is a fair amount of public? At, at what point do they get to discuss their concerns, if at all?
Yeah.
Because it is nine o'clock.
I'm three slides away from the end.
Okay.
I just wanted to finish up.
No, that's fine, I just.
I'm not gonna push Amy to talk too quick, but I'll tell her, um, we, we covered some of the green space stuff, but Amy's an expert in some of this native plant life, and I'd like her to have at least an opportunity to share more on that in case there's questions, so we don't get repeated questions on something we can talk about now. And then I'll talk a little bit about timeframe, but I got people out there, I'll help advance you, but if you don't mind, just sharing a little bit of my topic with you.
Everybody can hear me?
I don't want, I don't know.
Right, the first thing that we look at is not just the site, but what's around the site. When I, when I'm, to lay out a conservation development, so I wanna see how this is gonna fit in the watershed and the community. Um, so the first thing is just to look at, where do you vegetate the site? For conservation development, you don't look first where you build the houses, you look, where do I, what do I save? What do I keep open? And that open space has to be high quality and for a particular purpose. And then you find where you can build the houses that will have the least disturbance. Um, so in looking at this, the first thing you do is look at the stream. And um you really want the stream to be wooded or deep root vegetation to keep a healthy stream. So the stream is, stream is cleaning itself twenty-four seven, um, and providing clean water for the drinking, water supply. Um, so that's where that dark green is. And then the aqua blue is where was their wetland soil, highly hydrant soil that would um support wetland vegetation, and it also filters out a lot of pollutants. The wetland vegetation, usually that it eats phosphorus for lunch for the most part. So the aqua blue is where there was wetland soil. Um, and then there's like the buffers around the wetlands, um, to keep them highly functioning, keep extra water going to them when they uh, and who is extra food is going to them, so there's a little bit of a light green buffer. Um, and then the other places that was, where there would be woodland is you wanna connect woodland to hockit. Um, deer and all the critters and the birds and everything, they don't fly from woodland to woodland, they really wanna contiguous wildlife corridor. And there's some woods across the street, um, so that's why we had. Um, so that's why we have that medium green that kind of wraps around the north and the east. Um, it's to provide that woodland corridor that connects to the woodlands that are already there. Um, for migrating birds as well. Migrating birds, they have a flyway, and they fly all around the streams to get from north to south. Um, and just keeping that woodland in there gives them that corridor. Um, and that leaves us with the buildable place on the inside. And then some way to roll wetlands into the stormwater treatment. Um, there's still probably some deep sections of the pond to get the volume that you want. But the wetlands also have, wetlands are inundated certain times of the year, a foot or half a foot to a foot. Um, and then they sometimes will dry out on the edges, so they have to be both wet and seriously drought tolerant plants have to live in a wetland. Um, the other thing that we were looking at is to keep it pretty natural. I think the days customers want to be surrounded by nature. Um, the people that would be living here and the people that are already residents want to look at beautiful nature. So the strategy was to put a woodland and woodland restoration at the front. Instead of a, instead of a mound um, to really do a thicker woodland, some bigger trees to start with, but um, you're also going to see a lot of cyclings that go in in a woodland restoration. And it would mature over ten to twenty years. Um, so that was part of it. It's going to look like the woodlands across the street. It's going to fit in. Um, uh-oh. The, the stormwater wetlands have a variety of vegetation from where they're deeper in the center to where they're more shallower on the outside. And then we would buffer any of the the idea is to buffer any of these restoration areas, the wetlands, the the vernal pool wetlands, which are wooded wetlands, the woodlands up at the front, to buffer them with uh, a no mow or low mow grass. So it's got a lot of uh, creeping saplings in it that get like a shag carpet like a golf course. So you seed with everything like that, and then you mow a clean portion just around the outside of that. So when you're looking or walking around, it's not just lawn and then woodland or wetland. You have a lawn, a transition area of this no mow um, into a woodland or wetland. So it looks more natural and a little bit more seasoned. Um, and what this does for stormwater, if you look, the way that the engineering works and the EPA works, there is a critical storm event. Um, a three-year, ten-year, a twenty-year storm that may not leave the site any faster than before it was developed. What none of the engineering standards do is consider the volume of water that's generated. Period. So it considers how fast can a critical storm leave. Um, but it doesn't say you can't generate more water. You just, you can generate more runoff because you've got roofs and driveways. But you just hold it back and release it at a pre-development rate. What the woodland and the wetland and the prairie vegetation does is it reduces the um, volume of runoff that the site generates. Period. Um, because in the engineering standards, they calculate a volume and it's multiplying the area by a runoff coefficient. And the runoff coefficient for lawn and the runoff coefficient for wood is the same thing. So it's like fifteen percent. So fif- fifteen, fifteen percent of the area or if you have an acre and it's all lawn and you have an acre that's all woods, they think that only fifteen percent of the water that hits either one of those is going to run off. Well, lawn has root system that's an inch thick. And a tr- a prairie has a root system that's taller than I am. And trees have root systems that are as big as this room. So the native vegetation is going to soak that stormwater in and reduce the volume. So the best thing that you want to have, if you don't want to flood out your neighbors, is to encourage more open space with deep rooted vegetation, be it a prairie, native wetlands, or woodlands. Woodlands is the best. Because ten to fifteen percent of the water that hits a woodland will actually run off of it. The rest are just soaked up by the tree. So that's the strategy. I know what the, the engineering numbers aren't going to get all of us what we want. What, but reality of what a tree does will. Um, are there any, if anything? Yeah.
No questions. I'm just happy to see that this is the route that this has gone. When we think back to the initial site plan that had AR one to FR one splits and all of this disappeared, this is much better. And for the people who live close to this, this is going to keep your land a lot drier than, than that FR one split would have. So I'm, I'm just really happy that we're finally getting to the point where this is the type of development that we're getting. How much maintenance um, the different areas? And are these easily managed by the HOA or they're going to have?
The HOA will need a, they'll need a, they'll need some guy to send a plan on it. So to get, to do a restoration um, in the long term, five years from now, it's way, way less than move on. But the first three to five years, they might have to be managed six or seven times. And then starting the third year, um, less and less and less. Like the third and fourth year, you're starting to see three, four times a year management. Um, it's just during that establishment period where really all you're doing is keeping the bad stuff out. The way to have open natural land is just keep the bad stuff out and nature takes over.
Will, will the HOA continue to maintain that? Because things like bush honey, it doesn't matter how established you are, it's going back. Will the HOA be coming through every year or two to remove and basis?
Yeah.
Good. And it's, it is my understanding that prairies depends on you when you burn off everyone.
Ideally, ideally, I burn mine every year.
I guess that's happening since the eight.
No, it's, it would be mow management. It's not ideal. It's better to burn it. Um, but it, it's going to require mow management. So the first few years, you just wait until it gets six, eight inches, eight inch tall, and you mow it just below. Uh, because the Canadian goldrod, the Timothy, the non-native stuff is going to come up higher faster. So you just kind of mow that above the prairie stuff. And probably about year two or three, the prairie roots are three, four feet down, and the prairie starts taking over.
So it's, it's going to be all thistles and boys and I.
No, you manage for that. You wouldn't want, you would never want thistles. You wouldn't allow some things to see.
So.
It's adapt, it's called adaptive management. So you go out, you see what's there, you make your management plan for the next season, they found what you see. Just keeping the bad out.
So the, the plan we thought was uh, holders to be installed uh, prior to or during the process of the development that it's going in.
It would, the installation, I, I.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at is we're looking at a drawing of what we'd like to see and what's being proposed. My question was the installation, when exactly to be approved? It's, it's not going to, you're not going to wait, not going to wait till the HOA. If it's always going to be putting this in, right?
I talked a little bit about timing. That's kind of what my next slide is. So it might go hand in hand unless you had something else.
Yeah, what, what are the six words? Okay. So these homeowners are going to be the speedos. They're going to want to spray those wet. How are, how are you going to keep those from, from spraying the things that you're trying to do in very wildlife use?
I'm.
Traditionally have a management plan, but the HOA is going to have to adapt to, to handle um, how that goes through. So we're, we're going to introduce some best practices as part of the development tech. Hopefully that can be the responsibility of the developer to, to help educate uh, what they have. And then there'll be a whole education process, I'm sure. Uh, there's other projects and sites like Covington Meadows uh, over off of uh, State Route, the old three C. As an example, they had a whole education process that they went through with their residents, which claimed why the no mow area. So there they weren't done as well as obviously what we're, we're talking about. A lot of them would just walk away and see what happened. Um, but there's a whole education process that'll have to happen with these, the way to make sure that it's being appropriated. Uh, a lot of that starts with the developers, so. As Justin's group uh, sells a lot and allows buildings for that. They're going to have to go through the whole discussion about what we're doing lots of, uh, demarcation of property lines, how all that.
To make it aesthetic, requires establishment. I mean, even the woodland is the first thing that's going to have to happen, and then you would then stabilize the site, probably some kind of seeding. So it would be a grassy type of thing that the trees would come out of in the less than refined areas. Um, to stabilize the site. And then you introduce the pioneer trees, the ones that will take over the quickest. And then um, have some bigger samples of oaks, things that take longer. But the pioneer trees will take over within five years usually. They just come up everywhere.
Do you think you had something else that you wanted?
I did, since we're honoring the one minute per comment rule, right? No, it's, no, no, it's not, it's not Amy's fault. It's my fault. I started this whole process. So um, I think uh, this is slide ten, so I'll, I'll conclude our tenth minute here. Um, this uh, this one is just uh, it's probably too small to see in here, but um, this is to talk a little bit about the township's role versus the county's role. Uh, this whole development process we're going through, there's a whole chart that the county has, county engineer can tell you uh, where everything goes in the development process. It's too convoluted to explain to you. So what I just wanted to kind of explain was what happens next, and then we can talk about big picture after that. Uh, so going through the development approval process, we traditionally have a couple hearings with the zoning commission, so I noted that on here. Um, not, we're asking a vote for tonight. Um, we'll take, collect and feedback when we're coming back and having uh, additional comments. Uh, if we can't address that in a couple meetings, we end up having a third meeting. But the way I've drafted up here, we'd have a second hearing with you uh, after resubmitting to address the clarification from the ninth meeting. Uh, after that happens, uh, gets forwarded on to the trustees and there's a vote. Alongside that, there's this full discussion about the subdivision process. And uh, on occasion, we'll come back and we'll talk about amendments, because during that county subdivision process, additional comments come up. So uh, even though you're rid of us, maybe after two to three meetings, uh, the, the chances are we're going to be coming back. So sometimes the urgency that we talk about in the timeframe is just to continue the process, but doesn't mean we're not going to be back to have discussion about how something interacted at the county level. So uh, if something's missed, it's usually brought up at some point through the process. But uh, the planned district's a little unique, and instead of just coming back to the zoning inspector, we're traditionally coming back to the zoning commission. So uh, we may have future public meetings after this process goes through, just to clarify something or make sure that we can make amendment, a, a minor or major amendment uh, in accordance with what's being requested of the engineer's office. Uh, our goal is to submit for preliminary subdivision, uh, kind of in conjunction with this next revision. So uh, the hopeless, uh, we'd be uh, having an in-depth conversation like we are tonight, and hopefully hear some public comment here next. Uh, and then we can take those comments and come back to you with some revisions. Those revisions can also be presented as a preliminary subdivision plan to Delaware County. Uh, so we'll get review comments from uh, swollen water health department, engineer's office, uh, everybody else that's going to comment, regional planning, uh, building department, floodplain, all these other agencies that look at plan. Uh, they commented on a sketch plan a while back. They're now going to be commenting on this more detailed plan that we're presenting, all the, the intricacies that you're seeing. So uh, that discussion will come back and uh, we'll be able to come back from the trustees uh, and the zoning commission and have discussion about what that looks like. Uh, we don't traditionally have major amendments in that preliminary subdivision. We've usually done a good enough job of plan that it'll continue through. Where some of the adjustments typically happen is in final engineering. So uh, the more costly phase for uh, my client, uh, because they're going through uh, instead of a two to three page development plan, they're going to have thirty to forty pages of development plan. Uh, cross-sections of roadway, actual designs of the wetlands. Uh, we're going to be bringing those plans back and talking continuously with the township. So part of my role as a planner in the process, come back, talk to your, your planner, say, hey, uh, monthly update, here's what's going on with the process. Uh, we're in this final design. Uh, eventually, we're going to need a sign off on the engineering plan to say that there is compliance with the development plan. So that process continues over two to three months. Uh, eventually, we get a sign off from the county engineer's office that it's okay to build. Uh, but likely we'll be working with you to make sure that it's still in compliance with that original development plan. My goal is to make sure it doesn't change because the costly amendment that has to come back every time we have a small little change. So uh, we're going to try to keep it consistent. Uh, go through that process. Uh, after site work is completed, uh, there's an entire uh, evolution of monitoring for stormwater, uh, making sure that plantings are put in place. Typically, there's a year-long process after the street uh, approved, before it's accepted by the county. Uh, via township road maintained by the township. So typically, the developers plow on the street for the first winter, getting, getting it ready. Um, as construction is occurring, we're back in, in discussion with you guys. So uh, I've had some levels of discussion, namely with your maintenance department about Harlem Estates as an example, just went through that process. We've had some uh, roadside erosion and other things that we've had to deal with. Uh, but ideally, uh, we're not coming back to you with major removal. So the, the plan is that what you see in front of you, maybe next month, is uh, what you will see uh, happen. So uh, with these amendments that we make, our goal is to continue that. If we don't, we're back here having that discussion. Typically, again, that's why we're pushing for comments, we can keep pushing through, but with the idea that we may have to come back. So um, I only say that because I, I know planned districts are a little bit different than the straight zoning district. It's not, does it comply or not? There's a, a bunch of intricacies there. So um, the goal is to uh, maybe see you again in the future, but under friendly context of, hey, just want to give you updates along the way.
All right. Um, Joe, at that point, then I want to go into our question. I wanted to say, look, open it up to the public and see if there are people that have a question and or a comment that you'd like to share with uh, Mr. Place, uh, as well as with the zoning commission, regarding the intervention that you heard made. Yes, go ahead. Please, I did a.
My name is Steve Den. I live on Ridgeview, uh, over off of Harlem Road. Um, what this feels like is really effective, assuming it's installed properly and maintained from great uh, management of, of water runoff, water control. So that everyone who is downstream from this particular parcel uh, won't see a meaningful difference in what happens when it rains heavily in this area. But it also implies then that everyone who is upstream from this, if that isn't managed in a similar fashion, everything that feeds, all the acreage that feeds Duncan Run, then this, this development and everything further downstream will be heavily impacted. So it, it sounds like it's going to put uh, some level of pressure and consideration on the township. Okay, how are we going to manage all the acreage that feeds Duncan Run? All of this will be great, but it won't matter if everything else upstream isn't managing in similar fashion. Um, if, if there are just five acre lots and there is no management of that, and they, they fill them up with houses, uh, driveways and streets, then all, all their efforts here will go for nothing probably. They'll be overwhelmed by what comes from upstream. That's an observation. I don't know if you can address that in any, in any way, but seems like there's a lot more work to do in the future.
Um, I think as a township, that's why we've been so interested in trying to see this work and make this work. So that when there are future developments, we can try to push towards this so that we do have more control over that water management. Because in a typical lot split, we have very little say as to how water is dealt with. And unless it becomes a big enough issue that the county gets involved, we, we can't really do anything. So I, I think you're right that this could be a problem in the future with more development, but if we can. but if we can get more people to go in this direction, then hopefully we can get that all taken care of.
So I'm assuming there's already a study that would tell us what acreage or what land feeds Duncan Run. What parts, what parcels sit within that.
You know, where the headquarters of the Duncan Run, that county. So I mean, it's outside. Plowing that over it, where's that water gonna go? But it, I know that because of, it's my source, so the intuitive is putting in a pipeline from the edge of the township out to the end zone site. And all of that is, all of that has the watershed canal. And that's where some of it's coming. I don't know that we have any control on what happens in Lincoln County as far as the floodwaters.
So, so does Delaware County have any, any input with Lincoln County as to which way that water flows? I'm from Newark, they could use the water there.
It flows, it flows downhill.
And from what I've seen, they don't really do much about water until it's problematic enough for them to need to do something about water.
I was gonna say, though, the counties regulate planner review, but ultimately they all have to be presented to EPA. Any kind of disturbance maker of land, we have to present for an EPA permit for stormwater management. So there is a statewide review process where it crosses county lines, I'm sure. But I think any development that disturbs or makes or should be submitted for EPA review, they should be for your government. Just aside, that, that review's more administrative, it's a public involvement process. But I would encourage you to submit the complaint if you see land you deserve that causing, potentially causing major concern, they should have a permit.
Other questions, comments?
Yes, please.
Identify yourself, your address. Can you hear my name on my A or just?
I'm Bob Dalton, I live on Woodtown Road. Excuse my low carbon tempo, I normally embed in my one-piece pajamas way of on that. I have a, a couple of questions, and it's specific to the fifty percent rule of being withheld that's buildable. And that being part of our conservation district, I'm not familiar or fluid with this acronym yet. So when Joe, you did that presentation, which I thought was great, the first one out here, but I copied some of the math. And it looks like the hundred-year floodplain was included in that calculation. And I'm just wondering, am I confused or did I miss something, or am I wrong?
I can guess that. Yeah, it, the hundred-year floodplain is included in the.
Joe, it's, it's not goes, hit that light, check the, press the light on to make sure the green light's on the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Which means you do that one left and right.
Yes, yeah, it is included in the open space, it's not excluded. It was excluded from net developable calculation, where we got our density calculation. But the open space does include an extent of a hundred year, and the fifty percent includes the extent of a hundred year.
Yeah, and that's my concern with respect to stepping forward, is we have this source document, our legal guardrail, that's gonna also guide developers and protect us. And, and it's pretty clear in there, that fifty percent set aside has to be buildable, and floodplains aren't buildable. And that's even according to Delaware Regional. So my concern is that, I love the design, I think it's absolutely brilliant. And I love what's being done, but I'm worried about the legal snafu we're creating. Because we could wave to another developer and say, look, we've got this conservation design, and he could look at it and say, I don't like it, I wanna do what this person did, which was deviate from what you had written and put mine in. And you could say, no, you can't do that. He could take it to a judge, and he's got an equal protection argument before the judge. And so that could potentially open us up to a lot of loose definitions of what a conservation district is, that's different from what we've defined it, and really create a lot of havoc and lose a lot of control. That's my perceptions, and, and I'm open to being corrected. So I, I don't know if that, that needs to be checked out, I think legally. Cause like if you look at the Genoa Township lawsuit that went to appeals, and it was about submission, but you get a sense, when you review it, you get a sense of what that judge looked at and waited. And what were design plans and what was actually done, and deviations from that, of course, you know. So I think what, what gets approved has to be also in alignment with what's written, that fifty percent buildable. Am I making sense, or am I all over the board, cause I'm tired?
So, let me, let me run, let me run these numbers, actually, to give you the help. The text of the PRCD says that the density is point six for net developable acre. You take the developable acre, net developable acre, you multiply that by point six, and whatever the, the whole number is, that's how many units you can build. In this case, the engineering study, according to the math, was out of the sixty-nine, sorry, fifty-seven point nine two nine acres, only forty-four, forty-six was net developable acre.
Yeah.
And so on that forty-six.
Twenty-seven point six.
Well, I think it's twenty-six point something.
Yeah.
So, so if you take forty-six acres, net developable acre, forty-six, which excludes the sixty acres in the floodplain and, and, and other things, the right way and smaller reasoning, you get twenty-six billion acres. And that's what developed, you know, twenty-six. So I would say.
It's not fifty percent of the total acre.
No, of the buildable acres.
Developable, that's, he just told you that guideline.
No, and see, he shared at the other time, remember the other night, you shared, and I said.
But now I have the numbers in front of me.
So I said it was buildable, and then we pulled it off.
Yeah. And, and I don't know where that, if that comes out of the comprehensive plan.
The master plan and also from Delaware.
Well, the master plan is, is a policy document, not a legal document. So that does not have a force of law. The zoning resolution does, and it's the wording of the zoning resolution, which in this case is net developable acre. Okay, is, is what you do in your density calculation. That forty-six acres, so you will get, when you're getting about thirty-three and four, thirty-four acres developed and thirty-four acres underdosed.
So, so basically, our, the master plan should have some language cleaned up then, in the future.
We, we.
Next time, division. Okay.
I mean, we, we're not making changes to what was already adopted in November twenty twenty-one. You can look at the supplement that we're doing in two weeks and say, put some language in there that these things up.
I'll dig into the zoning plan, I mean, I'm too tired to do the math, but I'll, I'll do that, thank you. And then somebody who wanted to come didn't come, who lives right there, there, sent me pictures of kind of what would be characterized as a hundred-year storm on that Duncan Run and the seas. And it was actually across three rivers. Oh, if I were a nomad, I would kayak it. But it was way out there, and they were shocked. And I was hoping they would come and have a map, a pinpoint here being where I'm shot from, just to see how much water really moved today, because it went right up the fence line, so.
But I think even compared to the, the fields that are there currently, these wetlands are going to deal with more of that runoff than, than the fields that are there now.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So I think if, if anything, this is going to, it has to improve the situation. The engineers don't allow for any situation other than for it to improve the water situation.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the public? Yes, please, either that or we can use the portable one that Joe has back there. Please identify yourself, name and address.
I'm Bill Lane, I live at six oh six four Harlem Road, on the west side of the proposed. And I have a series of questions, and I can just list them, they're not really in order, but and they relate to the development, not necessarily to the zone, the book. But we have one acre, we're proposing one acre lots for about twenty-two hundred square feet housing. And I was just curious what this anticipated sale price was of these custom-built homes. And I suppose I'm also curious about, to see the list of proposed builders. I'd like to do that at some point. The, the other thing is, you raised the question about whether AAP has been contacted. And I wondered if there's a proposed, perhaps underground lines, electric, electric.
All of the electric for this subdivision will be underground. The AAP discussion was about the high-tension lines and the fact, that portion of the lot.
I, I knew, I didn't realize that.
Yes, we have, yeah, there's more, more here.
That's good to know. I, I'm, you know, I'm also a person that's concerned about light pollution, and I'm hoping that for our lights, this, this development to bear down rises above upwells.
That would be, the lighting will be on an individual problems, there would not gonna be any streetlights.
Right. Well, I know I disconnected the light in front of our driveway, because it was, I'm American lighting power, lighted well, and I thought that was my position on my list. The Board of Health is going to be reviewing and, and meeting super separate people. And I hope that, you know, that they do a good job. The, I was, I'm a little concerned about the fire safety of these houses. I had thought that there would be naturally two entrances to this subdivision, one from Corset Road and one from Harlem. And of course, the people who wanted to go over at six oh five could go out Corset and go down. I, I know that somebody said that they wanted to keep Corset as a peaceful country road. And actually, I'd like to keep Harlem Road as a peaceful subdivision. You know, the same township and all this is changing that. The, the width of the township road that's planned out of, to the west, how wide is that?
Joe, what's gonna be the width of the city, James?
Thanks. So it's twenty-eight feet likely of the entrance, based on the preliminary county comments. So the main section in at least for that first row, it'll likely be twenty-eight feet. The rest of it would likely be built to what they call, I think, usually called low-volume load empty, the twenty-four foot, the twenty-foot roadway with two foot paid firm on those sides. That's typically required with open ditch roadway like this.
Okay. Well, I'm really not looking at a wetland or any of some trees, I'm, my driveway comes directly across from here. So I'm gonna have to move my mailbox, I think. And that is a concern, I don't know which side to do that, one of the golden orange and something. But the twenty-eight feet is better than fifty, so I'm gonna thank you for that. You said, you thought, you thought, you thought it was all?
Yes, the, the north part would be the single phase up top, and then there'd be two phases for the roadway on the south side, potentially. Could all be one phase, but based on market and how many dollars you're interested at the time, may, may have an interest. It might be that the road gets graded and everything with one, one major phase, but there's a lot of intricacies to go into finishing a roadway, so to provide some avenue that we could pave the initial roadway and not have hard surface in the back of the project, in the back of the subdivision, and you go ready to build a lot back there. A lot of that will end up depending on how the engineer's review does.
Right. Do you, you think that it would be, began at Harlem Road or at another section of the?
Yeah, I, I'll kind of use the curves around here, but for your sake, I think the phase line would likely fall in between, just north of the, the, the south basin, so I'm gonna approach this, and I think people home can see this. But the phase line would likely be right in here, between the two, and that would allow us the opportunity to create a turnaround, temporary turnaround, right about where the mailbox location was proposed. And then that remain for people that wanna check the mail or do something. So we'd work out those details through final engineering and what the engineer's office would permit. But that would ultimately be where we had originally discussed potential divide, the range to two phases.
I missed, I missed the mailbox.
Yeah, the, the, the post office no longer allows individual mailboxes within subdivisions, because they're trying to cut costs. So we have to provide a central mail location for boxes now. So the discussion was where the green space, the open space continues up, because there's ample area between homes, that we might provide a central spot there. And then that also where we identified on the plan a potential active recreation area, which would also be in line with the code, potential for any type of improvements, like benches or trails or anything else that would specifically try to encourage people to come out and utilize that area.
I think, I think that's it right now.
All right.
I guess I am concerned about the last day. But, you know, and actually, I'm gonna, now also with the traffic, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna be driving out in front of a road that's fifteen and twenty-six hours, we're gonna be coming to, so, you know, it's a concern, you know, but I'm gonna be. Hopefully, it can be a problem, and, and it was nice that, if we had a second actually, to go.
Yeah, I, I can talk a little bit, I didn't talk about sub-street at all, but just briefly, to allow more of a comment. But I, I like those comments, and why I'm pulling across Corset, the environmental impact of that would be substantial. And I did hear loud and clear, part of the reason why people were gonna oppose the FR one zoning, which we originally had contemplated, was because there would be a concern about potential road cross, and the cost that I think would be calculated anyhow, but the environmental impact would be great. So we provided stuff in the south, through the county's comments, additional land that may be prone for dissolve in the future. And the goal would obviously be to help mitigate traffic, unfortunately not on Corset, but hopefully on future ma- more major corridor that's potentially planned in the south. There's really no opportunity to continue the sub-streets in the east, because that land's mainly developed and, and then environmental, again, the terrain as you go through the high-tension power lines dropped off there. So the main area that the county identified as potential street stuff would be to the south, and the location that I had identified there.
You have a turnaround for that, something, south one?
Yeah, it, it would likely be one of the last driveways, would be over-engineered for an ample turnaround. It would be a temporary, that could be taken out, when and if it all, whenever certain south were planning for that, but that's not a part of this project, and it would be totally separate from the idea. So just to be clear, we don't control the property itself. Would love the opportunity to continue projects in the township, but at the time, we're just anticipating three stubs, because the county's requesting them correctly, so two ways and how it'll evolve.
And when does the fire department get involved and begin to review and approve them?
They, they had some discussion with us during the schedule review process initially. When we get this plan to develop during preliminary phase, it'll be a part of our. When we get this plan to, uh, develop during preliminary phase, still be a part of our technical review committee. Uh, so they'll be commenting on the preliminary plan at the county level. Uh, they also, uh, have to provide a review on the final engineering drawings. Uh, and specifically the county, the engineer will, uh, ask for their onsite inspection, uh, after the road built, before the turnover of the county as well. So they get maybe three staffs, the apple, but usually, uh, the most helpful is the onsite inspection after the road built, make sure that there are, uh, the artificer to limit the amount of changes. So, uh, we'll have to provide, the engineer will have to provide a fire safety plan that shows, uh, fire truck making a turnaround here and these curvatures, and then ultimately the, the driveway active. Because the homes are full up closer to the road, they typically sit in the road and serve the home, but, um, they'll have to make sure they, they can get around the fault as well. And they'll have some feedback on the road, too, if I won't like where they.
Will there be a hydrant?
Hydrant, yeah, there'll be multiple hydrants through the project, um, typically there every, uh, three hundred and, or I'm sorry, every four hundred feet that's what we're requiring, it's part of our mistake, but, um, that may be four hundred or six hundred feet. But, uh, that requirement is minimum, will have to be met, typically they'll want to see them in intersections and also determine that the ball commit the fate of water trucks, uh, fill up at those locations. That's typically why the entrance for wires do, or do the hy- hydrant entrance, they wanna make sure the fire, uh, tanker trucks sitting there filling up, that somebody can get in the mouth, do the water, and, and, uh, to mitigate the traffic backlog.
Any others like to comment in the public? Tell it, yes, or go ahead.
Thank you, uh, my name is Fred Isaac. My wife Judy and I live at fifty-nine seventy-nine Harlem Road, and if I understand the development plan, I think our driveway is right opposite Road A.
That was the thought, Road A.
So I think that planned road empties right into our driveway on the west side of Harlem Road. So that's where we're located, we're just north of Bill Lane's property. I have two questions, I thought after the last meeting, that we were maybe gonna look at instead of two acre lots, four acre lots. Now, what happened, uh, to that conversation where the lots were going to be larger, up to four acres? But when I left that meeting, I believe we were talking about fewer dwellings, the twenty-sixth that are now planned. Is that incorrect?
I do not recall any discussion about moving to four acre lots, no. Um, I know that there's, that people from the public that have inquired about increasing lots side.
Right.
And, um, that has not been something that we as a zoning commission have ever given serious consideration for, as something that we would want to do.
Well, since it seems we're gonna have two acre lots and twenty-six dwellings, uh, it seems to us that it would be far preferable to have sanitary sewers rather than septic systems in this development, and I just want, wanna ask why we're not talking about septic systems sewer coming up to this project, rather than seeing twenty-six separate septic systems, which seems to me to compromise in a serious way the, the, uh, water quality that we all wanna preserve in Duncan's Run, as it runs right directly behind our house. So I, I don't understand why that twenty-six separate septic systems doesn't compromise seriously the quality of the water.
Um, this, this place, do you, why I have a comment relating to that?
Yeah, as I understand sewers, uh, down the road and, uh, and there's, we're still probably at least, uh, almost a year out from construction on here, so, uh, it sure became available. We would definitely be back here having a conversation about sewer availability. Uh, but from the feasibility and extent of sewer for residential development, uh, in our own township, uh, this is too far from the distance sewer lines, but ultimately, why are we talking about onsite septic? Um, I didn't go into too much detail about the onsite septic, um, we did have discussions about, uh, dirt systems, uh, trying to limit the amount of, uh, additional dirt being brought in for like mound systems as example, uh, to help, uh, limit the impact. Uh, but the health department's rules, uh, and regulations require the siding system to ensure that we don't create, uh, detrimental. There are two systems, show three blocks, I don't know how much, um, I'm duplicating knowledge that's have, so, uh, stick with me if you already know this, but, uh, we have to identify a primary system and a secondary system, uh, in situations where there are higher density like this, where we have systems that are closer together, the health department typically monitors those, uh, more regularly. So, uh, the idea is if a system order ever fails and were any potential for contaminants, uh, they first need orders to repair that system, ensuring that there aren't any contaminants that are ruining the system. But secondary is they want to be, uh, required to install in the system. Uh, but based on the health department's regulations, uh, I have not found septic to be an environmental contaminant. Uh, it does, uh, put, uh, it was in, or it does put, uh, waste into our, um, sub-surface, uh, soil. But part of why we test for permeability and everything else is to make sure that that's being treated before it gets into our groundwater. So, I, I don't know if that answers the question entirely, I'm not a septic expert, but I do know that we have to use the Board of Health's expectations for, for septic here. Uh, and they have identified that we can push this from into the open space, uh, as part of the final engineering process, to help provide ample spacing between the system, uh, if that's, uh, something that can be facilitated as a part of the, uh, review through final engineering. What's shown here is proved feasible, will pass the preliminary subdivision plans, but ultimately, uh, it's not our desire to build septic systems, the sewer is no longer, definitely looking at it. We might also be looking at a higher density, the township permits, uh, point seven five millimeter, uh, within a sewer site. So, uh, it would also result in light is more, uh, so I think sewer permitted twenty-seven, was writing twenty-six. Part of that is we couldn't get sewer, the sewers, septic, uh, soil suitability for septic systems on a twenty-seven lot, so it's not being proposed. So, uh, it might be through the final engineering process, but we need another lot or a couple two lots, um, but ultimately have to improve by Board of Health. So, uh, what's in front of them might change, it might be more lots, that's potentially short to call it back or do something in the plan to get that to.
And we also will be planning for the future in the sense of when sewers potentially do become available in that area that these homes will then be able to have access to.
Yeah, and not just that they would have access, but they might be required in time.
They may be required in time.
Because it's in a subdivision flat and it's not road front block, so I talked this about Woodtown, I, I regret that I was in my, when Woodtown left, but, um, so a lot of the lots around Woodtown were created by no flat lots, but those are not required to tie in sewer when sewer becoming available. Traditionally, uh, subdivision lots are, so, uh, if the county provided sewers access along Harlem Road, uh, traditionally, they would ask for the lots, and I didn't, they would extend sewers to cap fees, um, so, uh, at that time, if they determined there's an environmental risk, um, they would, they would extend sewers, they would require cap fees to be paid, but ultimately the county would be doing that as part of their expansion of the system. Traditionally, they'd pay for that with cap fees, so it's not a burden of showing any system, but, uh, if development brings sewer further north to site, they definitely, you know, can't miss one sewer. Today it's three mile, I think three miles, whatever down with.
Now, this is not just an environmental issue for us, we can tell you that from our house, the land rises towards the east to the back of the field that we're talking about, and after every storm, we can see the water coming down our driveway right into our garage. So this is an issue that is not just environmental, but it's personal to us, because we're at the bottom of that swale, and the, and the rain comes right down our driveway, right into our garage, every storm.
I, I truly anticipate that with these wetlands in here, you will notice less of that. It will not be able to travel across that as quickly as it does with just a field.
I think that, uh, that, you know, the question and the issue that you mentioned is like, if it's something that they need to hear, and as they are working on the engineering for that and planning for the I P, with what Virginia is stating, it looks like from what they are proposing, that the, the development would actually improve that situation rather than make it.
I hope you're right.
I do too, I do too. But it does appear to be that way.
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, yes, if you want to go.
Everyone's tired.
Okay, I'm Judy Isaac, I'm married to Fred, I live at fifty-nine seventy-nine Harlem Road. I don't enjoy getting up in front of people, I'm really pretty shy, but I feel very passionate on this subject. Um, yes, we own our home, but I've never, ever, ever once thought that I was the owner of the home. I, we are the caretakers of this land, and I feel passionately about this. And I feel this is an opportunity for Harlem Township to rise above the bar, raise the bar to what we have seen in the development south of us. All of these developers and, it just, they all look the same, well, it's just, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but I loved your questions about, um, about the materials. Let's use real materials, brick, how about solar, um, roofs for the energy? I mean, let's, I mean, we can be an example, we don't have to be a follower and be like everybody else. Let's stand out. Think about that, really, and this is a great opportunity. I love what you were talking about, the, the wetlands, I mean, I, I, I hear a lot of good things, but I also hear some things that I go, uh, here we go again, we go like, like another development, and it's all, it's not gonna be sharing in public speaking, I, um, what, what did you say about the lighting? Um, how much you hated the lighting? And you, you used kind of a swear word, but it was a nice word. And I, I don't want this word, but I have to say it, I'm sorry, and I apologize, I don't like the word. But the materials I've seen in some of these developments are just crappy, they're just junk. And we can be better than that, we can have standards, wood and, and solar energy. And, I mean, there's so many things we can do in our, I'm here, but we are trying, we're thinking about that. But, and it's worth our time, and we don't have to rush into it because a developer wants to get this all done and, and get, um, what, the septic tanks in because, whatever, you know, because we've got another year or two before we're gonna get sewer. We don't have to.
Well, uh, can I comment on that for a moment?
Sure.
Uh, I live down the street from you, my last name was Rashy before I got married, so I'm in the brick house with the cabinetmaker sign out.
Oh, I love that house.
My mom sat on this commission for thirty years before I did, and I have now basically taken her seat. This is something that a lot of us have worked on for a long time, and so I know it may seem like it's moving quickly, but we, we have really tried to make strides in the right direction. And I think with the wetlands, with not having a traffic developer come in, we, we are getting there. It is slow progress, but this is progress nonetheless, and I think a lot of people, Joe included, I mean, he's been to how many meetings with us? I mean, the, there have been a lot of people who have put a lot of hard work into making sure this is not something that, that wrecks the township, so hopefully, hopefully we can find something that we're all, all happy with, because it has taken a lot of work from a lot of people over a lot of.
And you, you've alluded to that, and I guess what I wanna say is, keep up the good work. Don't, don't think, don't sell yourself short, you're so close, but we can, we can still raise the bar. That's all, I mean, no, I applaud what you've done, and I like the comments that I've heard.
I personally, I agree with you that I would like to keep something in the architectural, um, style, yeah, the design, something that would allow solar panels on roadside.
Well, I mean, just think about it, I mean, just not, well, anyway.
We did at one point to discuss maybe a geothermal system for development, but.
Yes, we did. I'm done, I'm sorry, but, no, thank you, I mean, you're on the right track, but there's more.
It's a, a slow struggle, because a lot of people don't understand that, okay, we're going to one acre lot, but we're going to make sure there's at least an acre of open space for every acre that.
And four wetlands, four wetlands on one, on one parcel, so it, it, it is a struggle to get everybody to understand that, but it's different, it's not what you're seeing everybody though.
And, you know, it's not what you see down in the model, it's totally different.
I don't wanna see down what they're seeing on the flats. No, no, down, um, Harlem Road, you know, I mean, beyond South of whatever. South of, uh-huh, no, and, you know, Duncan Estates, I go, really?
Well, the, the name's not gonna be posted anywhere, 'cause I had that same sort of thought with the name, because we have the Westerville Estates as well.
No.
But if the name's not posted, and, yeah, that's different.
Westerville Estates does have a name.
Well, yes, but if Duncan Estates isn't posted, then you might not make the trailer park.
Oh, I've never seen anyone that. So, I don't know.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
So actually, the, uh, that title sort of came with us when we purchased the land, so initially there was a zoning exercise, uh, going kind of in action with that title, we continued it. We specifically have kind of been holding back because we are not sure if we like that name. Um, candidly, we are, we are perfectionists, we are very aggressive, we've been considered net zero strategy, we have been pushing for solar on multiple of our projects, so it's something that is truly, truly embedded in kind of everything we do, we try to kind of like go one step further. Uh, this is a product type, uh, not only in Harlem Township, but we have land, uh, down by the Passola there. We're actually looking to preserve a fifty acre, uh, wooded wetland, uh, in that location, also due to conservation plan. We have land further, uh, to the east towards Brandville, also kind of setting that, so for us, uh, we're looking to, just as you said, we're looking to, to push that. I'm an ex-architect, so architecture is always in the sort of eye of the beholder. Some people like brick, and some people don't like brick, too much brick, and even as we kind of went back and forth on the architectural, uh, kind of landscape elements up front, I said, well, maybe not white picket fence, let's, you know, I have a dry stack stone wall in front of my house, that's just like, has this wonderful feel. We've been kind of looking at it as like, uh, an element at the, the front to kind of give that character that it's been, been there for a long time. So, um, we do have a lot of experience, we are, people tend to not love to work with us, because we push them further than they'd like to be pushed, uh, especially the older folks that work with, so, I can, I, they trust us, but we, we are, we will definitely, uh, try and be the best we can.
So you may change the name.
We might change the name. Yes, I actually asked, and I, I presented, I said, is that, if, if it goes in with that, do I have to be stuck with that? Um, 'cause we are, whether it's the preserve or the woods, it, it's not exactly, uh, illustrating the vision for the, the whole development. And we know this is gonna be, there're gonna be specific buyers that want this land, they're not gonna be looking for the back home, they're gonna be looking for a, a custom national experience, so, uh, I did, or, we're still working on that name.
Given the, uh, the hour, I would like to say, uh, the, the change, the opportunity to, there's one more, uh, comment, question from the public, uh, we'll provide for that, and then we will, uh, I don't, we'll entertain a motion after that, so, for, uh, the, uh, theory to be continued with this estate in time, so, any last, uh, individual out there that we'd like to have a question or make a comment? There's, there are no more, okay?
I would like those, uh, the, the, and I, I do have a number of others.
Yeah, I do too, there's a number of things that.
Well, I wonder, what, what is our role in the H O A aspect? Like, do we have much say in what goes into the H O A, because it says things like fertilizer.
Because it says things like fertilize and that's really not great for lots of the.
Let's see, if you guys can share, I know, um, we have to make it a public record, but if you can share comments with us, we'd like to compile an updated plan. So some of that nitty gritty stuff, I think is quick answers probably on our part, but, um, some of it, you got example documents in front of you. It might just be that it hasn't been thought out in relationship to this development maybe as much. So, uh, we welcome that. Uh, I did want to talk about timing. Um, I'd like to get a, a updated plan to you to address some of these. So we're not rehashing the same comments over and over again. So, uh, if my interest was to present updated plans, say in the next ten days, is it possible we could be on your next agenda or just further discussion?
Well, we're gonna set that, uh, date of time now for, um, before we recess or move to, uh, for recess the hearing, we need to set that date of time, there's going to be a motion for the. Okay, that would be if we went to our next regularly scheduled, uh,
They wait so, so much for this. We may not have the final plan in front of us to, we vote one way or another on.
My goal would be to try to address comments and get it back to you as soon as possible. If you wanted to meet in the time, in the meantime to have further discussion, we could do that. Uh, but I'd like to try to have a plan out for you, say by like, um, Wednesday next week. So you could at least see that we're, we're trying to address everybody's comments. Or it could be a public meeting. I think you just extend the hearing to whatever time you wish. Traditionally it's a couple, a couple of days notice, right, for intimation.
You can do without the.
I do have. Pretty obvious.
Any other date, uh, the week of either the twentieth or the week of the tw- uh, twenty-seventh. So if you're, if you're six, uh, the day is, the, the special is.
There's special meetings scheduled on the sixth.
One scheduled on the sixth.
I don't really sound like an army home.
And there's a following week, the twenty-third.
What's the week of the twentieth? Whether it was, oh, oh, yeah. I could have probably do the twenty-third.
I think regional planning meets that night if, uh, I don't know if any of you consider regional planning meetings, but we need to be here, but I'm sure.
I think, uh, uh, so many inspector parties, uh, going directly. So thank you. I forgot about that.
Twenty, twenty-first, twenty-second. Twentieth is DCA, twenty-first.
Twenty-first could work. Twenty-second. Last one to plan, that was, oh, it's the third.
Twenty-second?
Twenty-second. I would prefer not to.
Are you, are you looking for us to present something in advance of this meeting or, um, what would you? Okay, that we'd have a discussion.
Yeah, if we want more public comment, we have to do that. If we want any more discussion, it has to do.
It'll be a public thing. It's just that.
Yeah, the week of the twentieth might, might be difficult just in general for me, but I, the following week, the twentieth seventh, I, I think we discussed that or the, the twenty-eighth. Um, those both work for me, but the week of the twentieth might be a little tight just because regional planning is.
Now, the fifth, Jay, please, just.
When, the week of the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, it did work for others. I didn't want to mandate a time on everybody, but I was traditionally that week's pretty open meeting line.
It was, I can't do that, but I'll, I'll read to your comment. Is that whole week bad for you?
Always, yeah.
Twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth, is it twenty-eighth?
No, I think I am not.
Although.
Not at bear at all. But like I said, you can do it. I'll just send him my, I'll send him that out.
Or no, but I trust you that you couldn't tell me I'm someone to handle.
Yes.
All right, then I'll do it on the twenty-fourth.
Work for you?
Twenty-seventh? Twenty-eighth second.
I can't do that week, but, uh, if, if you, uh, I, yeah, that week might be bad. Um, and unfortunately the, I have meetings.
They're like a big court. Twenty-seventh. What happened to your notes?
Twenty-seventh?
Gotta give more time to review.
All right, twenty-seventh, one time. It was seven or seven.
Seven thirty.
But it's Monday. And it's gonna be intimation. Now, I will post that or have that posted on the website. But it will not be advertised until we're done.
And how are we gonna get these new ones?
I, I hear you have people in the office now. Come see you. Um, I can get those out. Um, we'll, we'll get revisions out by next Wednesday. So, um, we'll plan to have them in your inbox and ready for review. Well, we'll post the PDF as well so that, um, utilize that for public consumption if they can come in to see a copy.
Um, it can do as a Word document here.
Okay, yeah, we can provide those. Uh, yeah, we can provide a Dropbox.
And do the PDF for the public.
Yeah, well, um, we'll provide a Dropbox link for the Word document. It, it does get a little big because we have some images in there consuming quite a bit of space, but, um, yeah, we'll provide that.
Well, I need someone to make the motion that we.
I will make a motion that we recess, um, hearing, the, uh, TRCD, twenty-three, national one. To February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty.
Uh, so all those are things that can come to you. So we are in recess until. For a hearing. And now we, we open the regular. I'm not calling the votes.
I'm making late to pee. I'm making myself.
All right, now.
We're calling December. On, I'm walking somewhere.
December five, I mean, well.
I know I think it's delivery like there with them when I receive it.
I guess some of this issue of water.
I'm sorry, did we add your agenda down here? Trying to get the minutes approved here. January, December five, we just have the, the twelve. January four, residential, January four, regular, and January nine. Forty-eight, they have motion to all five of them. Further discussion?
No.
One favor say about. As the record, you know, and a great long to the motion. Second, all in favor of, uh, uh, yeah, we're, thank you. Found a lot of hand.
Set it on the desk and make something else. Yeah, she sort of turned me into a. They bought the house at eighty-seven. Moved out for a while and it's all. No, no. Didn't see because they knew that there hadn't been any good things. They don't see come along like, I mean, they want to know. And I'm not, I'm not.
I'll be ready with the. By all means, give whatever you can.
That's.